Get started, uh, let's see, first thing we're gonna do is go over the discussion items. We've got a presentation by Eric Crude of the M.G.A.T., and, uh, he's running the hedge program. And is, uh, is Eric here?
He is.
Right here.
Why would I recognize him? Mayor, just before we get started, I'd like to recognize somebody if that's okay.
Well, sure.
I'd like to recognize Eric, 'cause he's the money man.
Uh, definitely.
He keeps the gas going for his folks to be. Also, I'd like to recognize Donna Tate. On the, in the gas program, they have several inspections out there. And, uh, just as FYI, Donna and her team of consultants and Roger are, they're the only, we're the only city in the state of Georgia that has passed the public awareness program, inspection part of all the gas inspections we're up to. We have no violations until then, and that's all due to her hard work and Roger's hard work and the consultants' hard work, so a big hand for Donna Tate. And she'll be up there a little bit later, but in the meantime, we're back there. She'll come down and talk about hedging.
Okay. And the flip side to that is if you don't pass it, you get fined, so that's even better for y'all. A lot of cities have had that as an issue here lately through our, I don't mean just stuff up there.
You told them up already.
How is everybody?
All right.
Thursday.
Okay.
Larry and Donna asked me and Roger to kind of come, and what we're trying to do is we're surveying the members. We're trying to get to every city and ask them, how do you want to handle your gas purchases in the, in the advance and the future? Um, and what we've rolled out many moons ago, probably in 2002, was what we call a hedge program, if you will. It's basically just buying gas over the course of the year for your winter deliveries, maybe a piece of it. Um, so you're buying a fixed commodity, kind of hedging your decisions, not 100% either way, but at least trying to manage that gas purchase. So we're not all at the mercy of a winter, of a cold winter, where prices tend to, in the past, shoot up in the winter and somewhat lower in the summer. Things have kind of changed in this market. It's kind of all over. You can never predict which month is really, um, gonna be high, which month's really gonna be low. We've been in some pretty steady gas prices for the last five years, four years. The reason we don't do summer is your customers don't have a lot of gas usage in the summer, so there's really not a lot of risk for those customers. They do burn a lot of gas with their furnaces, uh, in the winter, and so therefore there's our, there's our bogey we've got to kind of take care of. And so all our program does is, and it's, it's a going-forward program, we, we kind of basically go out and survey the membership, and the membership tells us, okay, here's your volumes, gas authority, can say it's, you know, a million units or 100,000 units, and we'll have those 100,000 units in our hedge committee, which is made up of our president, our CFO, our, uh, hedge manager, our operations, uh, vice president, kind of goes out and says, okay, we've got a piece that our cities wants, want us to do, and over the course of a year, two years, we'll start buying those pieces, uh, whether they hit price targets or monthly targets. It's just kind of a way to hedge your, uh, majority of your gas purchases, which are in the winter. It's a way of hedging that price, where you're not at the mercy again of that winter up and down. You're kind of gradually going into that market. And that's all it basically is. You really have three options. One, you don't have to hedge, you can be 100%, your customers can be 100% at your market. Two, you can be in our program, where again, you give us the volumes, or three, you can do it yourself. There's nothing stopping the city of Tipton for doing it themselves. Anybody that tells you they're an expert in predicting the market is obviously false. Nobody knows for sure. It's just like predicting the stock market, just like predicting, predicting which way crude's gonna go. Lot of experts, but nobody knows for sure. Um, so it's really those kind of three options. We tend to stay away from your industrial load, because those customers can do it themselves. Your, your hospitals, um, your Tipton exclusions, your large customers that you have here inside City of Tipton, we choose, we, we meet with them, we let them know, um, that it's an option for them, but if, they have enough volume, they can do it themselves. And we'd rather them make, we'd really rather shed this risk and let them make their decisions, because ultimately, they pay the, pay that gas bill. The reason we do it for our residential commercial accounts is because obviously can't get a million or, you know, 100,000 people in a room and decide on that, so we kind of take a, a piece of that. If we don't do it all, we take a piece of that, and that's what we're, you know, what we, we struggle, that's where kind of the rubber meets the road, is trying to figure out what volume you want to do. And, uh, so that's basically it. We've looked at the volumes, Don and I, Larry, Roger, and we, we think we've come up with a, kind of a plan, if you will, um, and, uh, it's, uh, it's kind of looking at the, the months that we have the most risk, December, January, and February, and coming up with a volume of around 50,000. Um, that may seem like a lot of volume, but let me just tell you what the city burns, uh, total volume is, uh, let me see if I have that, 370,000. Obviously, the law, a lot of that 370,000 units, if you will, is your hospital, your larger customers, your peanut, your drying facilities, but 107, 160 to 170,000 is your residential commercial load. So we're looking at, you know, at least doing a little bit of a piece here, not quite adding, it'd be around, again, 50,000 to the 160. Nothing to stop you from in the future. Prices go down, prices go up, to do more pieces. We don't like to be probably over a 60, 70% hedge. We just, we, we just feel uncomfortable there, because that's, you know, you're really trying to predict the market at that point, and your citizens could come to you and say, why, why'd you do that? You know, why, why'd you lock us in for 60% of the load, and you don't know for a fact that it's going up or down? So we, we kind of like to hang around 50 or under, 50% or under. So, uh, we just want to do a piece. We think it's, it's wise to do a piece, that way you're not 100% at the mercy of the market, but it is 100% at the discretion of the mayor and council. Um, you don't have to do it. There's nothing, there's no law that says you have to do it. Uh, it's just a financial tool to offset some of the risks that we are inherently gonna get in this market with any commodity. Prices go up, prices go down. Luckily, all that being said, what I said, we're in a pretty levelized price market. We're in a pretty low price market, so obviously that would tend, you tend to think, okay, great, we're in a low price market, let's buy some of this low price market and continue this low price market for our customers in the future. And, uh, that, that's kind of it. I had a simple presentation, I think it may be in your packet, but it just kind of goes over your volumes, and it kind of goes over what this program was and is, and then also we have, um, due to the Dodd-Frank Act, we have a, a sheet that we now have to sign. We used to just do it over, well, in 2002, we did it over fax, if that gives you any indication how long ago it was. But now we just have a little simple resolution that the mayor and council can sign, and it basically gives a, uh, a title, if you will, Larry being the city mayor, the title that here is the authorized agent for the city to approve, um, obviously the hedging.
Eric, let me ask you, and I know you just said this is kind of like the marketing thing, I can't predict. What is your gut feeling where our gas will be in 10 years?
10 years, 10 years will be very different. Five years, I think, will be in the same boat we're in today, which is a very low-priced market. 10 years, boy, I'll tell you what, if you go back 10 years and you, and you see where we were 10 years ago and where we are today, it is completely, it just flipped it all the way around. We found so much gas, 10 years ago, we didn't know where the gas was gonna come from. Now we're finding more gas and natural gas in this country than we have ever found in, in our lifetime.
You're right.
So I think we're gonna get even better at that. The only wild card, Mayor, is, you know, how, um, you know, how do we react to a lot of wells in this country? A lot of wells onshore. You know, offshore, nobody saw, nobody cared about, um, except for when we, when we had the disaster down in the Gulf with the crude oil, um, well. But as more wells come onshore, the question is, how does this country view more, more wells in their backyard? I mean, obviously, we've got a pipeline being designed and built and looked at for this, this part of the state again. And any pipeline's very difficult to get built in, in anybody's backyard. So I guess, you know, we don't have what they call shell gas under Georgia. It's really up in Pennsylvania, Texas and all. And it's how do those states react? Because they could, they could shut it down. They could do like kind of New York, New York's looking at, or has in the past shut it down to no more wells. Well, as we've struggled with taxes and everything, the state's starting to look to open it back up, because again, it's a big money boom for, and they're seeing-
Blocking New York.
Yeah, and they're seeing a lot of Pennsylvania, doing a lot of things in Pennsylvania that New York's a little jealous about. So, you know, five years, I think we're, we're in good shape. Uh, 10 years, I think you'll start seeing price get back up, and it, and it all depends too on the transportation sector. We're really trying to push natural gas vehicles. And if that kind of takes off, obviously, any, any amount of natural gas would take off, take crude off the road, it's gonna increase the demand for natural gas, so, um, in fact, my boss just got a natural gas vehicle, and I imagine next year I'll have one.
Yeah, we may be able to say, okay, we're all right with more wells, you know, to look at the, the vehicle we have on gas, saving the air and so forth. So, hey, it'll be, it'll be good.
Yeah, but I don't know, you know, it's difficult to answer that. I think we're gonna be in good shape in the next five years, 10 years. Um, I think you're gonna see probably a dollar. If you just had to put me on the spot and say, you know, where do you think, you know, right now, we're buying gas for about $4 in the winter. Uh, it has got as high as 13 during Hurricane Katrina, it got as high as 13. It's got as low as 2. When it gets really, really low, like at $2, you know, we're at 4 now, when we're at 2, the wells start shutting in, or they really shut in around 3, and, and the producers stop producing it, saying, well, I can't make a dollar, I'll just keep it in the ground, wait till it goes back up. So you can kind of see, we, we're in this, you know, we're in this kind of range, um, but we've been at 4, 3 to 4, 350 to 4 for the last three years.
Eric, I, I, we're in the hedge right now, where, uh, the current hedge we're in expires in March.
This is the last winter we have, and that's the reason I'm here today, that this winter is the last winter we have in the program, so after this winter, we're completely free of any hedge gas, and we just wanted all our members to kind of take a breath, kind of look at it again and say, okay, what do we want? Because we have some members that say, you know what, I want to do it. Hey, all the power to you. You know, you're as good at predicting weather as I am, so, you know, you can go out there and do it yourself, you know, the rubber meets the road again on, on the volumes. We want our cities to look at their volumes, take a good, long, hard look, and, uh, and decide what you want to do. And I think, you know, piecemeal, you know, you don't do it all right away, you know, as far as the volume, kind of do a little bit. That's why here today, I'm not trying to push you into a large volume. Let's, let's go with 50, start with 50, that's about one-third of the load, and if you want to do another piece down the road, do another 50, and then probably stop there. That would be, um, you know, that would be close to 60%. Now, keep in mind, the volumes we're looking at, we're really comparing to the last two winters, which were really warm, so even 50,000 is probably gonna, if we have a normal winter, gonna look like a very small amount of volume. But it can be a very confusing topic. I mean, basically, prices can go up, but they can go down, and you're basically saying, okay, today's price is what I want to pay, uh, a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. But again, you know, you just, you just can't predict it. I mean, if it goes down, people are gonna say, oh, like, but then you come back and say, well, we only did a small piece. Mayor and council decided only do a small piece. We're not doing it all. You know, it's, it's not all, all the eggs in the basket, just a piece of them, and it's something you can look, you know, as, as you, as you look in the future whether you want to do more.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
I just want to mention, right now, the hedge where it's about $6 or something.
It's, uh, right, right.
And if we lock in to a four-year-
It'd be about four and quarter. That's how much it's dropped with the shell gas.
So, so the four and quarter, you know, that's, we can budget on that, we can project on that, and we can plan on that, because we're locking in at four and quarter for, for our, those of our customers.
It's a very attractive price.
And if the rate goes to back up to six or seven, I think it's probably gonna level out, long-term, somewhere around six or seven, that's it.
Yeah, you know, you look at the future curve, and you can go out five years, and you see it, about 20 cents every winter go up. So they, they think, the market thinks for itself, and they think that there's gonna be more demand as, you know, obviously more people born, more gas being burned, or, you know, just all the things.
Eric, that's, I haven't laughed with the number we anticipated, but in County, I haven't, we've seen it some of the line. I think these numbers are where we hit.
So that resolution will come through in October meeting?
It's just a two-page resolution. Again, Dodd-Frank is kind of forcing us to kind of get everything on paper, everything signed with all our cities, and, uh, and then it has, where you put in the volume. You just basically fill in the volume.
Okay, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is a discussion of bids for mining propane tanks to heat shaving plants, and that'll be Ms. Donna and Mr. Roden. Hey there.
We have six, I'm gonna stand up here so y'all don't have to be freaking in there.
Well, I'll have to christmagnate this, because I'm right over here.
How I stand right here?
No, I'm glad that was enough. It's really better for Christian church. Better to do, probably, maybe.
We have a natural gas warehouse out of Reno Road. We have one of the very few gas systems in the state that still maintains what we call heat shaving plants. In other words, where demand gets high, we're hoping for a knot in the warm winter, um, then we can actually take that propane, Roger can do it.
Well, we're under contract, we're trying to burn some of that, and if we go over that, we're liable, so that's what the heat shaving plant does.
If, if demand got really high, um, then we could take that and we could keep that from going over, because it's usually, you know, like, we got a certain number of gas off that pipeline.
What could it be, five a year, cut to 20?
It's, yeah, it's $15 right now for, uh, when, when you go over your contract on a curtailment day.
And they'll give us curtailments, so. The whole, uh, stuff that we've got here is those six propane tanks out there need painting. Roger did some work, we kind of spread it out, he did some work to the leak valves and to prep them and sandblast them, replace the piping that needs to be replaced. Uh, we've had a hard time getting competitive bids, because it is a certain type of job, it's not just a painting. We do have two bids, and Roger kept asking around, and right here at the last minute, which we didn't get to you, but it just so happened that the bid was about 48,000, which was more than, much more than the two that we did have. The low bid we recommended is the Chilean propane out of Tennessee. Uh, they're very good, they did some work for us already. Um, we were very satisfied with what Roger was.
They're one of the really fine ones, yes.
Right. So, uh, we'd like to get that done this budget year. It's starting to turn black in places, and it just-
They're a little rusty, aren't they?
Yeah, we, we don't want the corrosion to cause a problem, um, so.
Okay, any questions, then we'll move on to this heat.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
How much is that gonna be?
Uh, 25,000 nine seven two.
25,000 nine seven two oh six.
So you have virgin at 28,680, so that's what we're charging you for.
Uh, the heat program, yes, I'm sorry, 25,000 nine seven two, and we did have that, we only budgeted, uh, this year. The heat program is, uh, you've got a copy of the letter.
Just, just tell me, I'll put the heat in.
Okay. Uh, heat program is, the city has participated in it in the last few years, and what it actually does is it, you send a letter, which is a copy of it, it's in your packet, to all the utility customers, and they can donate an amount, 10, 20, whatever, up to, I guess you can donate the amount you want to, uh, but then we have, uh, it's called Heating Energy Assistance Team. And what happens is the money that's given from the citizens from Tip County stays in Tip County, and it is given to customers that are qualified in amounts of $350 per family, and we keep that on the, on books, and it's just a paper that gas on it, and it's helped a lot of people. And we have the most generous people in Tip County, because we, again, this past year won the heat award for having the most donations in the counties in the, in the state of Georgia. So this was from the municipal gas authority in our town size.
Right. How many do you have, Roger?
I have, I know I have at least three on the shelf, so we're very proud of it. Ms. Janet Joseph in Atlanta is very excited, uh, that we get so much participation from the citizens here. So they're asking for requests us to send those letters out in the utility statements, and, um, it's got the directions of where they send the money to. The money doesn't actually come to the city, it comes to the, some checks when it's made out to the customer itself. So it's been a very good program.
Sounds good. Uh, next is the drawing for some participation in that, we're gonna have to survey.
This is a key element in the passing of our public awareness. This is part of what we have to get out to the customers. In the past, it was just good enough to put a letter in the utility statements and just inform the public. Now they want to know how many people actually read that survey, or how many people actually read that letter, saying what to do with the natural gas. So this past year, and I think the year before, we put a note on the bottom utility statement and asked the customers if they would fill it out, sign it, and date it, and put it back in to the mail to us, that we would put them in a drawing for $100 in cash, and that's what this is. We did it in two different peer groups, one was customers, the other was excavators. We have a special letter and some information to go to everybody who's registered in Tip County, as being a contractor, plumber, and also anybody who's registered with 811 as an excavator.
How, how many, how response you got? That's better.
Yeah, we got enough response. They have what they call a minimum amount, or I can't remember exactly how you phrase it, but-
There's a criteria.
There is a criteria you have to meet, and, and it was, we were lucky that we had enough response from the citizens that it put us in the, okay, you got your message out.
Right.
So you have to, out of our, somewhere around 13,500 customers, we get a note back that our percent of accuracy or 1% of confidence levels, what they call it, and that we are getting our message out.
That's right.
And we continue to do it, like I say, I, I will continue. Uh, this is the first time the Public Awareness Plan has ever been inspected by a Public Service Commission. It used to be a small part of the whole gas system. Now it's a manual and a plan of its own.
Well, it is.
I enjoy it. This is a drawing, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you draw.
I knew you were.
Yeah.
I'm gonna hold the bag and let you draw.
Okay, that'll be fine.
I'll hold the bag.
That'll be fine.
And I'm gonna turn my head.
We shook them up. This is for the customers.
Everybody, wait, I'm not looking. Magicator, how in the world? How'd that get in there?
They're all Magicators.
Eric Crude? I'm not sure who that is, I'll go back. It's a former county commissioner.
Well, this, this says Harry, it doesn't say Harry yet.
I'm not sure.
It's Harry.
That, that be your son?
Oh, I don't know.
Harry, A.T., all right.
We do have their address and contact information, so they'll be glad.
Oh, that's good.
I hope that comes out. And this is from the excavators.
This is what?
The excavators, the customers that are plumbers, anybody who's excavating.
They dig pictures.
Yeah, the ones that actually, the ones that really want to get out, call before you, call before you dig message, we like to get out to the customers and the excavators, because those are the ones that actually do that. Thank y'all.
Well, that's good.
Well, that's pretty good, because I was really glad to do this last year, because I think the guy said, when I called the gentleman last year to tell me once, he said, I really had that problem? I said, do you think I would put that in there and not actually do it? So, yes, we'll be glad to let them know.
Uh, thank you, Roger. Wonderful work.
Thank y'all.
You do appreciate it. You like to sleep with them. Let me have one. Okay, I'm gonna recognize, so Canada's in the running, did you hear? Actually, give me a caution here. Uh, you're calling from the north, Canada, so you're probably, when you come in, I'll have a, yeah. All right. Next item in discussion, a resolution providing for acceptance of CEB grant for Leroy Rogers. Fran, give it to us.
Fran is not here, she's not here, so she's asked me to handle this for her. Uh, this is, as you all know, we've received $500,000 for the senior center. It has to be officially accepted, so there's a resolution in the packet that we will ask you later on in the call meeting to adopt, and we have to get that back up to DCA by October the 2nd, I believe. And we will also amend our CIP budget to include this additional $500,000 for the senior center.
All right. Uh, the next item is a discussion of bids for the sound system in Tip Air. I guess that'd be Steve, Larry?
Well, actually, Mayor, we're gonna pull that off tonight. Uh, we're gonna have to redo that, so, kind of big compliance is over, our purchasing policy doesn't allow us to sell, so is that. And, uh, we'll get those bids out as soon as we can. Now, we would ask that we could forego the 30-day advertising period on this, because if we didn't get the sound system in place, between ordering it, uh, most of the bids are approved, between ordering it, getting it placed, we have less than six weeks to get that. Actually, four weeks, I believe.
Never nine?
Four weeks.
Sorry? Never nine, is that right?
Never nine. So it's a very smart type of time frame, this special, I was talking, uh, we would send packages out to, particularly, we sent out last time, but we had, we sent out five vendors last time, we got two back. Uh, we did infer additional, and also, uh, the, uh, when we rejected the bids last time, we asked that we, wait, do we have someone on board that understands theaters and can help us with stuff, with exact specifications, so we all, that. Let's, let's forward all of that.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next item is item seven, a discussion of signing text amendment, Bert Crute.
Uh, as you can, well, remember, over the last several months, we've been, we've asked to have some community input from, uh, possibly signage within the historic district. Uh, we went through several different meetings with, uh, different citizens within the city. Y'all got a breakdown of that, I think, at the last, um, council meeting we had, actually, I think it was the last workshop, we got a lay of that, you should have had that in the packet. At that time, we were asked to come up with, with some changes accordingly, um, and so we did, and in the process of that, the main changes were to change within the historic district, but as a part of that also, we had just some LDC changes, land development code changes, in order to make everything be in compliance. I guess to start with, the first change would be a, um, text amendment that related to, I mean, actually, not text, it would be changes that were done to the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission guidelines. Basically, the, the two major changes there, uh, right now, currently, the only lighting that's allowed in the historic district would be, uh, lighting that is indirect, and that's also related into our land development code that way. Um, there's already some lighting that's not indirect there. Plus, we wanted to allow the, um, Historic Preservation Commission the opportunity that if they did want to use certain types of indirect lighting, that that would be allowed, I mean, direct lighting, excuse me, that would be allowed. Example being channel lighting, which was one that was mentioned, um, possibly of using some LDC, I mean, it was, uh, yeah, LED, excuse me. Um, and, and those were discussed in detail through, that's what came out of those meetings that we had originally. Uh, we also talked about some secondary signage, um, in the historic district, which was a separate issue. The issue there was with, um, allowing for banners possibly, or a banner. In this case, that was the recommendation to allow one 24-square-foot banner, as approved within the historic district, and to allow up to five, uh, stick-type signs, um, up to a maximum of 10 square feet, as approved by the historic commission on COA, sticking to appropriateness. Uh, these items were discussed here, particularly, and I'll go into the other side of it on the LDC in a minute, but those were discussed through the planning and zoning, that's Monday night, and Tuesday night, with the, um, Historic Preservation Commission, of which both parties were, were accepting. Of those particular points, had really very little discussion. There was some discussion about the, uh, uh, signs, the small political type or, or stick-type signs, uh, there was some discussion about that, but it was accepted unanimously by both parties. In doing that, we also found, and you'll tell your ordinance, that one thing that comes[1726.38] In doing that, we also found, and you'll tell your ordinance, that, uh, one thing that comes up is that we currently, even though there are some in town that have been there before we took over, a few have been placed since then. Um, our ordinance says that no sign shall blink, flash, strobe, stroll, such as that period. Um, most LEDs are set to do that. So we had to make some changes in that in order to correct the issue within the historic preservation commission guidelines. I'm trying to confuse you, but that's kind of how it works. Throw a pebble in the brook, it, it ripples, so you got to fix everything, and you don't. And actually, Mr. Seagull brought it up, that that was an issue, and we wanted to address that, so.
And it's still an issue.
It is still an issue.
And it's.
Granted, it's still an issue.
Mine.
Okay, it is an issue today.
It is.
In fact, technically, right now, if, if I was to, and we have not, because we knew we had to fix it.
Right.
And, and we have not enforced it. But if I had to, I would have to make each LED sign sit still. Not move, not change, not do anything. Which is extremely excessive if you're a business. I mean, there's no question about it.
But these products have.
It does, absolutely. And spend the money on it, and those that are out there are not. But that would be what I would currently have to do. We have not enforced that, because we knew this was coming. Um, with that being said, we were asked to, with some forms guidelines, to be a starting point, a, you know, a mark in the sand as to how to regulate them. The first thing we had to do is define or redefine multi-message signs. Because now, the market's changing so rapidly in signage, in advertising. Uh, we're getting a lot other than just, uh, LEDs, we're getting, um, more of a screen type signs that we have around that actually show video. I mean, there's a lot of different things coming down the pipe that we wanted to try to address. Uh, so we did redefine multi-message signs as any sign that can change a message. Um, that would be any sign, whether it's mechanical or electronic, that can change a message. Okay, with that being said, we had to come up with what would be recommended, so to speak. Uh, initially, we'd come up with ten second changes. It would still not allow for scrolling, strolling, blinking, flashing, et cetera. Um, those ten second changes would be allowed to change every ten seconds. Um, that was the initial ordinance as it was drafted as a draft. Uh, as we were going through the store, uh, through the, the different boards, the planning zoning, um, actually suggested or recommended that we change that to five seconds to give more opportunity for advertising, and there's a change in message. And by the way, most of these games, times change, because the state does regulate billboards on US highways to ten seconds changes. So, you know, that's kind of where that came from. Um, I personally, from our department's standpoint, think that five seconds, as long as we do write in for the billboards, because we do have billboards on state highways, you know, we can't, you know, be beyond the state's requirement. Would be sufficient, I think five seconds would be fine. Um.
Now that, I'm sorry, sure. You say ten seconds.
A change of message. Five seconds is better, because you're getting, putting a message up every five seconds instead of every ten seconds.
What do they have now?
Uh, well, technically, right now, they're supposed to have nothing. They're not supposed to change message at all. But, uh, we have not been enforcing that, granted, and I admit that.
That's the land development code.
It is, that's correct, that's correct. But we allow, we actually don't have anything disallowing LED in the land development code. But we do have something regulates flashing, blinking, strolling, strobing, changes of color on signage. It's been in there before we did the land development.
Yeah, that's, that's in the zoning.
Yes.
Okay.
It's in the regulatory portion of the signage, chapter seven.
And so what we're doing, we get conflict here, so we kept it.
Well, it, it, and, and I don't know, a conflict, yes, but it's, it's more of a situation where times are changing. I mean, before, we didn't have most of those where it said flashing, blinking, strobing, whatever. Then it was stationary signs, as we knew them, as, as me or you would know back in the day, blinking lights, uh, you know, swinging feet, arms moving. I mean, you know what I mean, in signage, the normal mechanical changes. Nowadays, uh, with certain type of signs, LED and/or, um, I don't know what I call them, I call them screen type signs. You can literally play a video for all practical purposes. I mean, you can play a movie if you want, I mean, I, I mean, it's, it's pretty wide open, and that's changing continually. And we'll can change, it will change continually, because as cities come up with regulations to regulate, uh, signage, uh, advertising firms and sellers of signs are gonna come up with ways to overcome it. And that's, that's okay, I understand, it's a market. Um, the situation that we look at, and this was one point that brought up in several of the, of the, the meetings, um, that we had with the different groups, is that, you know, this is, especially the planning zoning, this is kind of a deciding factor for the city in the future. You know, where are we gonna go from here? Um, what is the balance that we want to hold? And we're kind of asking you that at the same time. Um, the feedback I've gotten has been sort of this, although I've got feedback from the side that says, let us put whatever we want up for signage, let it do whatever we want it to do. And I've had it that we don't need LED or, you know, type signs at all. I mean, I've had both ends expected from the public. Um, and at the same time, it is kind of a decision, and the way it was put is kind of like this. You can imagine, two different places, one would be Las Vegas, Nevada, which pretty much anything goes with signage. They run, they blink, they flash, they scoot, they show shows, everything, outside, and video. The other side is a place to, say, Petree City, if you've ever been there, if you haven't, you should try to go right through there sometimes, where there are no signs short of small identification signs, and that's it, they have none of that signs, period. I think either one is too much of an extreme, that's from a departmental standpoint. The question is, is where are you gonna fall? What are you gonna allow, and what are you gonna not? Um, if you allow LEDs to scroll, stroll, flash, blink, change colors, um, then we're gonna have to do that specifically within the guidelines, which is your choice and your call, it's always up to you. If you don't, then you have to figure where the line is to be drawn in the sand, where to allow it and not to allow it. Um, we also included in ordinance, as you see, that we give everybody, whatever we decide, whatever's decided they are, we give them to December thirty first becoming compliance, wherever that compliance obviously is. So it is kind of finding out from your own, what direction we want to go. More conservative or more liberal from a standpoint of lighting, mostly electronic, but also mechanical signs. Any questions?
Well, I'm concerned still about seven point seventeen in the ordinance, and I'm not satisfied with it, because I think it is too restrictive. And particularly one sentence, which I would make or leave removed. And that is, the sentence that says, no sign shall power, blink, and flashing, scrolling, fading, or fluctuating lights or other illuminating devices that have a changing light intensity, brightness, or color. We'll remove that one sentence. How, how would that get supported?
That's seven seventeen of the land development.
That's right, section eight, section eight. Because, if you just think about this, uh, the sign at the University of Georgia Conference Center, the scrolling sign that advertises the library's event tomorrow night, that would not be allowed. Uh, the sign in your business, or headway, would not be allowed. I think it's anti-business. But that's one person's opinion.
I agree with you, Barry, I agree with you, it's too restrictive.
So if we take that out.
It's too restrictive now, I mean, there's no question about that, I'm not arguing that.
Taking that out, that's just fifty.
If you take it to fix it, it also opens up any type of lighting on signs, period. And if that's what, then that's what it would be, and that's, that's your, it's.
But not in the star, isn't.
Well, actually, now, we would have to go back, okay, and what would require, if you wanted to limit it in the historic district, that would be a separate issue, it would be limited in the historic district by the, uh, HBC manual guideline. Right now, that's why we went to fix this.
Or, and I thought that the suggestions in the ordinance about the commercial, uh, this, the commercial districts in the historic district, satisfy this. I mean, I thought that it would.
Well, I mean, again, if, if you take seventeen, one sec, seven seventeen, whichever one it's, I'm a A, A, one A. Um, out, what it does is it allows for basically any type of blinking, strobing, moving kind of lights allowed. I mean, it does, and this, and that's, and that's, that's an option, it is a bylaw. It would solve the problem, with probably the exception of the historic issue, unless you also wanted to allow that in the historic issue.
But right down the way you've got it set up, if we remove that one sentence, we would be able to have scrolling, flashing, lights.
That's correct.
Within the city of Tipton.
That's correct.
But according to your restrictions in the historic manual, those kinds of lights, only the kinds of light that you specify would be allowed in the historic district.
And we would need to, and also I would say.
Which would be the.
Correct. And what I would say to that is, is if that is a choice that council decides goes, is perfectly fine with me, I'm just.
Right.
We would probably need to define that better in the historic preservation commission guideline.
And they're making their separate man.
In their separate man. And the reason I say that is because it's, it's, it's tied together, but if you're gonna be more restricted in that, you know, historic district, which many times we are.
Right.
That is one specific thing that is here and is coming. I mean, you know, it's, it's gonna happen, so we need to, to look at, which is not a major change, I mean, you know.
Well, the thing right now, the way, the way it reads, as far as illumination in the historic district, it is indirect lighting, like in the commercial zone.
And channel lighting.
Channel lighting in the commercial zone areas.
That, that's right.
So really, the.
That defines it.
That, that is basically what, in the historic district, you're gonna have indirect lighting, you're gonna have channel lighting in the commercial.
Sure.
That's right.
So you have the LED.
The situation is, is that, and I guess my, my statement is, it's currently within this.
Wait a minute.
Yes, LED also.
Yeah.
Unless, in the old state, it was zoning restricted.
And speaking of that RP situation, situation that had been discussed in detail last night, at the, uh, one of the, it's in your notes, but it's in your, your summaries, but the HBC did agree to visit the possibility of, of changing some of the limitations within the RP. You know, after this gets settled, you know, they would look at it, agreed to look at it, and, and be clear if I'm wrong, but that's, that's one of the things that they did as a motion, it was set, just that they would look at that as soon as it settles, and it's true, to see if they could, quote unquote, loosen possibly some of in the RP zones. But now that's, that's just something they were gonna discuss, I mean, you know, it's open for discussion, so. And the only thing that I guess I would add to what is, is that, and, and it's not, I'm not defending a side, I'm just saying, we've never really had blinking, flashing, strobing, strobing lights within the historic district, that I know of. I mean, there may have been some, with the exception of the few LEDs that have been allowed, they haven't been there. If you say citywide, and you don't restrict it within that, that HBC guideline, then they may be that. They may be blinking lights on any type of signage, you see what I'm, I mean.
Except for RP.
And, and not in, not, I'm calling it in the commercial zone, that's correct.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, I mean, it still could be closed, if you know what I'm saying.
Right.
So that's the only thing I'm saying, is that, you know, it depends on how protected you want to be with, you know, historic preservation.
But Bert probably just passed a thing, and said, you have the LED lights and stuff, just couldn't have them in RP.
Well, that ain't passed yet, that's here what we're talking about right now. It's, it's what's on the table, it's in this ordinance to allow that, you're absolutely correct.
But it is in order to allow.
It is still out for now, in the ordinance, and that's all been, I mean, approved by both, you know, both of the commissions that would look at those things, so. That's really not for the issue of that, it's more in how much light you're gonna allow, as far as flashing, blinking, and such. Uh, and, and again, it's.
How much light?
How much flashing, blinking, strobing, changing of, of signal lights.
Correct. Not the intensity.
Doesn't, doesn't this sentence in the, in the proposed, I mean, you, it says in here that illumination of any sign in the historic district in the city should be in accordance with the historic district.
That is correct.
So that covers that. But you're saying we need to do something else?
I'm saying it doesn't address it. It doesn't address blinking, flashing, strobing, because it's never been an issue within the city, period. It's always been outlawed. I mean, I'm just saying, and so if you allow it now, which is fine, it, it may be something that may not set, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know how that would set in the historic.
You're saying we need to go back and change the historic district manual to say, either we allow it, or we don't.
Well, or just what you would or won't be very definitive, what you do allow and don't, and, and let the historic district.
Manual.
Manual reflect that.
Right.
And have that input from the historic district relating to that. Because they, they, they are a special district, I mean, they're, they're a designed district, and it is not historical, according to the guidelines that I've read, to have flashing, blinking, strobing, you know, such as that in the historic district, it's just usually not acceptable. It's usually indirect light, usually as subtle as possible, some channel light, I just want to include in that. Um, you know, that's just, that's just, I'm just saying, that's a kind of a conflict to some extent, but that could be straightened out. If you allow it citywide, it could be modified slightly within the historic manual, solidly.
So Bert, what you're saying, if seven point seventeen be item two, uh, I'm sorry, out of one, it would change that for fixed at least ten seconds to five seconds?
Well, that was what was proposed by both the others, but if you take out, um, flashing, blinking, strobing, um, it will matter.
That would be, so what's the strike?
It would come out, it would be struck out completely, that's correct.
And then how do you measure the intensity of these bulbs?
Um, we, we currently don't.
Because you got it, you're acceptable to the department, or they know how you.
I currently don't have anything, what we typically do is, um, we do have other places in the LDC that say, you know, that it can't affect a directed sign in the other, you know, areas, that it can be contained, um, to prevent light pollution. I don't have any way of measuring them currently, that will be something that I hope in the future we will be able to do, but I know we don't have any.
So do we need to keep this in here if we can't measure it?
Well, my comment is this, if it's affecting a neighbor, it's already in there, and we're gonna have to fade it, so it's somewhat duplicative, and that would be up to you. We have.
Till you handle this and be able to measure, I would use a lumens.
That's correct, that's it.
Matter of person, I don't know. And I think we have one of those ones come up, too.
We used to, because we used to, we used to reflect these, I know, we used to do it, so I'm, I just, I don't have one per light, or something, yeah. Or stop sign, I don't know, so we just do that.
Counsel, I used to. Measure the light.
And that really is probably very positive, I think.
Me, too. But I know about lumens.
So what one, what lumens would you say?
What, what, would you have to set a number of lumens?
It might be easy for me.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, there are other, there are other ordinances that, um, there are other cities that do have light restrictions on how much light can be put out by a signage. It's very common, we see it all the time, I mean, you know, there's standards set nationwide. It wouldn't be hard to come up with a, you know, whatever it is, so many candlelight, or so many aluminum working on light. And, uh, that would be a very simple thing to do, and then, you know, show what that would even be.
So do we need to, uh, regular, do we need to set some standard before we pass this ordinance? Or do we pass the ordinance, and then go back and set the standard?
And that's what I'm saying here, uh, this attorney, I have a question. Barry, can I play your question?
Just go ahead, Barry.
Let me ask the counsel, if they can give me valid.
I would like a honorary question.
Okay.
Uh, I think Bert's already answered, and I was just gonna ask, like, what lumens would you say it?
I, I, I would, it would, what I would recommend personally is to, is to do, just like we've done with Moses material, is to do a search on our part of, of other cities that do have set lumens amount, and why they have it, along with what road safety rules would say and read, there's some regulations there also. Uh, come up with a figure that, that, that seems to be acceptable, and I, I don't know what it would be, I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, I don't know. But that would be my recommendation.
I understand the importance, and, you know, you don't wanna be too bright, because it's distracting. But then if you spend money already on a sign, you don't have a way to dial it down. You set a lumen, and I'm over that lumen.
I can answer, I can answer one thing for you, that I think probably will help you with your answer, that I, that I do know it can read, I mean, just, I've been reading about this, this about forever. But one thing I have, is that most of the current LEDs that we see in this town are not high enough to ever be in a problem. As are most of the LED type place signs, because they're, they're, they're not as bright as you think. Where the problem comes in is with floodlights, and beacon lights, and halogen lights, and things like, and you can now have halogens if you pass it, like airport lights, if you don't regulate it, flashing. You see what I'm saying, we don't want that either, so, you know, I would say that the level, if you understand what I'm trying to say, Alan, I mean, I'm, I'm, is that, you know, I'm, I'm almost gonna guarantee you that if you had one that you could adjust up and sprinkle it up like an airport beacon, it should be all well within the guidelines, whatever they are set at. And I'm sure your sign on it somewhere says how bright it is. It's not to say that we can't check some of the signs around town and see where they're set, because they come from, the manufacturer's set somehow, or even they're adjusted. So, you know, that would help to set it, I mean, I can go into internet and figure that out, off of, you know, sales pitches for, for signs. So I would, I mean, I, I don't think the intent would be to completely limit it to where you couldn't use them at all. I think the intent would be to, where they wouldn't be dangerous, or we wouldn't have somebody that gets a really good idea to use a, uh, halogen, you know, million candle watt light, flapping it on and off on the highway. I mean, that's, and, and that, if you open it up to that, that's what you get. And you get it moving, it can do a crazy thing, and I mean, it can do anything it wants. So that's the difference, and.
Bert, you sound like you're using common sense.
Well, that's, that's what we try.
I don't know, it's fearful, one of the first, I mean, I had a lot of phone calls, here, my head. But, uh, I don't finish, we have tips.
I don't read it.
Uh, and, and that's real important. Um, you know, I, I didn't know through all this until the other day, that, uh, J.B. Powell, I think he was a scientist, they got like a ten thousand dollar, something by a X mark. And we wasn't hanging out on, on the side, because it had inner, inner lights. If we have to have floodlights that go up there, if they're in the historic district. And I thought, you know, floodlights glaring up in there, probably brighter than that inner light, maybe, just, I'm thinking, things like that, we just need to try to use some common sense, and work. Work without, it is, and some of them look so negative, and I'm, I'm excited to hear what you're saying, the way you answered, uh, Alan, because that sound like we want to use that guideline. You know, not to run people up to. That's all I have for.
And I do think that, like I said, that, you know, this block of information, and the reason I say this is because this has been going for how long ago?
About five months.
Four months, five months? This has been going on, and people kind of want answers, especially within the historic district, because there's people that want to use signage within the historic district, and I understand that. Um, my comment would be that there's, there's really not any reason why, and I see that the body of this document can be passed, um, e- e- including the fact that you strike the, you know, flashing, blinking, if that's what you choose, and then whatever modification we need to do within the historic district could be done retroactive. As could setting the standard done retroactive, it'd be something we could come back to and say we'd set a standard, you know, that would be a reasonable standard.
But now, the, the whole group in, in the store, when we had people on, on hall signs, and said that, and that, the other one who came back to us with the zoning thing.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I don't think we should be more restrictive on the commercial people than historically, or on people outside, and I'm sorry that I'm getting into that.
Well, we, we already are, we already are quite a bit more.
The historic district is a special separate district that is treated differently for, for specific, but is for a, a good specific purpose.
Oh, it's definitely different.
But I think the bottom line here is that they were asking for, for some temporary, I mean, I hate to call it temporary signage, but some other signage other than what we're allowed. I.e. banners, banners, state type signs, LEDs, all that's in here. But everybody should, I mean, you know, did everybody get everything they wanted? Probably not, but they got a big portion of it.
I just don't want to restrict it in commercial, which I, yeah, I appreciate.
I understand.
Mayor, I think this was the compromise that was reached between all the parties concerned.
That's what I thought.
In it, in this whole process, and we've been doing, we've had meetings and meetings and meetings, and, and more meetings and meetings, and this is the compromise that's, that's come out of all of those meetings. With this, actually, what you brought up, and I, and I think there's an easy fix there, Bert probably.
Yeah, I think we should, I think, same thing happened.
Well, that one sentence, that seven seventeen.
Yeah.
Correct, that's easy to fix.
Can you fix that, uh, up seven and nine?
Yes, ma'am.
We might even be over the standard if you were to start.
Somebody said something.
I have questions.
Yeah, hey, would you stand up?
Some extension of.
Then you stand up and give your answer.
On mic, from Microtop, um, manager. The question is, almost, you know, on extension of this question, says, we got the permit and all for the signs, whether they're LED, blinking, or whatever not. And if the permit was given, you know, now, you know, why there's a question or what you can do and what you cannot do. And the second, um, comment I have is, some of these readable, some calling it, they may not be programmable to five second or ten second, you know, it may come just like that. Maybe the new ones might, and the new ones may have additional features, but it's gonna cost the businesses, you know, another two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars that will lead, they'll have to go out of business.
If, if they take seventeen dash seven dash one B, whatever it is, out, A, excuse me, out, it will be muted, so you can flash them, blink them, scroll them, change them as fast as you want. You can have, we can like that, you do whatever you choose to do.
And the general comment I have is, being so restricted or spending it out, we are going to spend days and days and months to meet the county requirement versus a lot of franchisee requirements for the channel level of this size and that.
Well, in your case, in your case, you're in the, you're not in the historic district, you're in the general city. Those, those are in place now, and, and you're well within the guidelines, as I remember when you established your business, you redid your signs. Um, it's, I'm gonna just be honest, we got a fairly liberal sign allowance done by square footage of lots, and, um, that is not affected by anything we're talking about right now, really, at all. But, but if, if what has been proposed here this page is passes, you will be able to use your LED sign however you want, as long as it's not obscene, or, you know, questions of that nature.
Yeah, people have seen everyone's business. Everyone's business.
I'm Hal Vaxley. Uh, the thing that I would ask, and I understand you're gonna try to restrict the strobing and blinking and the flashing in the commercial historic district. What I would ask is this, what difference does that make? Okay? I, I know there are a lot of things that in eighteen ninety and in nineteen sixteen that weren't around. However, had they been around, those people would have done the same thing. We're restricted to a six square foot sign. Six square feet? You can't put stuff on a six square foot sign and have it roll every five seconds and anybody get a message out. So what, what I would ask is this, to do the same thing that I asked to do to begin with, is to limit the scrolling to a certain speed. And s- and have it only during the daylight hours or only during business hours, and it would be turned off.
Some businesses are.
My, my, my comment back to that is, is you are referring to the historic district, no, wait, actually, you're right, you're referring to the commercial historic district.
Commercial. Commercial historic district.
And with that being said, um, first off, if they remove this, the, the seventeen A out, um, what it's, what it's gonna do is it's gonna allow you to scroll however you want to. Now, how the historic district looks at that may be a different matter, because we're not just talking about strobing, because I agree, strobing in this way, it's not much different than changing, I'm not arguing that point. Uh, but flashing beacon lights are, and see, that's what I'm trying to say. That, that may not even be an issue, if you understand what I'm saying, Alan, you know that, I mean, I, I, it's something that they, and the only thing I'm asking is that give us an opportunity to get with the historic preservation commission and with the businesses again, I mean, I'm talking again, and trust me, I've been with them a lot, so, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Me too.
But to say, okay, well, your take was your take, and let's work back to the center and find out what will work within the historic district, and not allow a free for all in the historic district. I'm just being straight up.
Well, and, and, and that, that's not what we want. All we want is to be able to use the sign.
Absolutely, and I, I believe you, but what this would do is allow you to use your sign, technically. I mean, given the right zoning and such, I mean, it would allow those signs to be used right now as will, at will, and that's, that's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
Okay, and anybody else?
Well, I'm expecting some manifestation before the October.
If nobody else has played that.
Probably agree with both of that, but hopefully that's not an issue.
I'm not sure I'm understanding what we're proposing to do regarding scrolling and strobing lights. I came in late and just got off work, so I'm not sure I understand.
I had to holler, I had to holler, code, there's a seven point seventeen A or B that's in there, A that doesn't, can't have any kind of, kind of blinking, strobing, flashing. And so we're, we're looking to take, to jack that out.
And we'll still be sitting down to gather, together, what will take its place? Is that what I'm understanding, from Sam?
No, uh, we, we take this out, we'll put it.
Only in the historic district, we'll be sitting down again to see where we're going, can I understand that?
Well, we're gonna use the fact that we got the RP that's in care of, and we got it in commercial, we just don't want it too restricted. If we want to get them all in the historic district, we still need.
We're trying to draw the board, is that what we're to talk again about how to accommodate all the interests, did I understand that correctly? I'm not sure.
Bert, yeah, any time, any time that we, any time, as, as me being the employee of the city of Tipton, if, if I'm going to look at a, if, if council comes to me, as it sounds like they're gonna do now, and say, Bert, check on this particular situation, see if we need to change anything, see if we don't, we'll report back to you. The thing I want to do is go to the sensory and get input. I mean, that's my first and foremost thing. HBC is, is, is one group that tends to, that's there, that's where you live, you live there, that's where you live. I also want to get input from, and where you work, so I want to get the balance of what everybody's inputting in, and, uh, come up with a decision that is very reasonable and seems not to have much of an adverse effect on either party, and has a positive effect on both as possible, and then present it back to council for their review. And that's what we've done so far, and that's what we'll do for this too.
Tyra?
I'm Tyra Expreman, representing the Tipton, Tipton County Tourism Association and the Hotel Hotel Association. We support, uh, Marianna taking, taking out that one sentence, and we'd be happy. And I hope the historic district will be a separate issue, but we sure don't want to restrict our folks out there, trying to get people stopped and do business in Tipton.
Okay, nobody else want to talk, we're gonna move on. Bert, uh, uh, you've certainly explained this thing to him, thank you for that. Okay, y'all, we're gonna move on to item number eight. Uh, this is the discussion of vacuum tanker purchase. Chief Michael called.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bert.
Uh, I might have to sit.
You just sit.
Uh, I'm here to ask for approval for the expenditure of splosh funds out of splosh board to purchase a couple of what we call vacuum tankers. Splosh funds are available while I'm speaking. This is not part of your package, but it pictures six thousand orders, so that's what we're looking for, two of those. Those are different angles of purchase. These tankers are already approved. Yeah. Everybody got one? This apparatus is already approved on splosh for, uh, oh, seven, cap, cap out, right, uh, two, money's there, on purchase. We put out, uh, the request or proposal, such a generic, we have five vendors that responded, and, uh, it just so happens it's a vendor that has supplied with our fire apparatus for quite a number of years now, he wants. Also happen to be the lowest focus.
Good question.
They have offered also hold that price line, uh, purchasing the first time. Although reduction in delivery will not be collected personally. As you'll know, cats grasp, we have to have some more to how, we're not working on that for second project, about here, we need four here, uh, after January one and twenty fourth. These are not produced yet, when we give them the purchase order, they will initiate the production release. Shouldn't have one as early as January, February, if you want it. Be on to the screen before we have the second, that's fine, that's okay, all the money, like, I plan to go and destroy the fuel fire station, replacement of another tank. So we're in need of these tankers. We have water issues out in county, as most of the south of the county's due, pressurized water, these tankers. I'll give you an example, the tankers we have now in our fleet. It takes about fifteen, anywhere from twelve to twenty minutes, depending on the size of the tanker we have, to grab the water out of the pond. And then we have to use a fire engine pump to actually pump the water out of the pond into the tank. We're hiring up an app- apparatus and at least two men, possibly three, if, if one of these vacuum tankers, we can grab twenty five hundred gallons of water in under two minutes. Self containment, you don't have to use another apparatus, you know, when you're.
Quick or slow?
They're outstanding. This is a, this is a, these tankers really come from a, uh, a technology that, that came about from, uh, sewer tanks. Been around a long time, knocking fires from them. And a volunteer fire chief out of Mississippi, some ten years ago, decided, hey, why can't we make this work for the fire team? So he came up with the technology and the rest is history, as it were, but he won, actually purchased the Water Master Vacuum Tanker Company back in old sixteen. And they just sell like hotcakes. Cordial has one, I thought Chief Lottford up there, they had one several years, that's one of the companies they've had in the world of fire. So the fire line needs, uh, it's a little bit of their, and they have the. Yes, sir. We've, we've gotten great service from them over the years, we're a good rapport with them, they're establishing a company, uh, the last, the last five, seven apparatus would fall. Hello, Mr.? About everything we have on our grid, too, just to make it last, uh, be safe last ten years, each two, ten, latter ten, all those perks.
It's, it's worked, right?
Both. We don't sell fire. Okay. Well, sounds like you're making your own, it's not, it's not.
I don't really know, she's not here to go, I, I, what is this, mayor, is this a thing where a certain amount, red hold, you have to go before canceling? You guys should be able to make discounts first, without having to give ours.
Two hundred thirty nine thousand?
That's right. There's like a lot.
I don't.
Rather be safe and sort.
Mayor, we're working on the, the, some changes to purchasing policy, but we're not gonna ask you to allow, uh, expand two hundred thousand dollars.
That's a quarter of a million.
On a, on a capital improvement, on a capital purchase, Roger, approved.
I will add, just, just as a note, that's per apparatus, we're gonna purchase two. Yeah. Not a problem with four or anything.
Sounds good. Anybody else got a question? Chief, back to you.
Thank you.
Which end?
Yes.
Uh, item number nine is the discussion of Twinket Street, Councilor Chris Barrett.
Thank you, mayor. Council, I just want to kind of give y'all an update on something that's been on my radar for a while, we're working with Larry and our engineer Adam Cobb and some stuff. Um, of course, that street, you know, Twinket Street really is the main corridor from Old, all the way out to Old Ocellon, the hospital, you've got residential out there, you know, you've got tip that. I know I drive it, you did, a lot of people drive it, even that don't live in the city, they're going through, but they stop and spend money, things like that, so it's, it's important that that street be maintained. My knowledge hasn't been serviced since it actually got put down.
Process of supply, it's probably the last time.
Right, for when the hospital is built out there. So here's, here's the reader's digest of all that. To, uh, uh, to resurface that road, which includes milling it, repaving it, redoing, fixing sidewalk issues from Baldwin to Old Ocellon, which will be pretty much the entirety except for what's around the North Ocellon right away, is nine hundred forty thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. We don't really have that many. So, here's kind of where we're at. Uh, Larry and I are gonna kind of put a plan together, that maybe is in phases or something like that, and then maybe look at appropriating some of our LED mines and stuff like that. I think past year in Houston for sidewalks and stuff like that. Uh, I don't foresee us being able to do nine forty all at one blow, unless at least three falls out of this town somewhere, but. You know, so kind of break it out, that way at least it's on the table, at least it's kind of on the radar or something we can kind of get to and address. Uh, so anyway, I just want to kind of give y'all an update on kind of where we're at, what we're working on, and, uh, keep y'all updated as we kind of look forward from there.
Where? Well, I was just gonna ask, where are we on that paving, uh, Central Avenue that we talked about, that twenty eighth?
We're working on the, we're getting things to set up with members right now, so it's prepared, we'll send it out. We'll be, uh, central, the Grand Street, one forty fourth, and both of.
Uh, something in South.
Big Street.
Was that the issue that, the way you go, it's right, probably by the power of complaint?
Yes.
I'm really about to look to that.
Well, she had said. Well, it is because this underlieth the surface is deteriorating.
That's right.
But she was saying that the school bus used to stop there to pick up all the kids that live in that apartment, and now the school bus has to stop farther down the street so the kids have a walk, you know, that kind of thing, so we just need to.
This is a process.
I know, yes, yeah.
Right, and, and the beds will be run out in three or four weeks.
I don't know, it's a type of, of, they need to enroll some good, like, bases together, because that all has to be done.
Okay.
I would bet you're saying probably within three or four weeks, we're gonna capitalize.
Chris, this is the point I wanted to make about Twinket Street, and I drive it every day, and I know, it feels like my, you know, I, I know Twinket Street.
Right.
But, uh, before we start resurfacing, spending any money on it, we got to consider the infrastructure, and if that's good.
I'm glad you said that. The infrastructure right now, I would like to get it moved over under the sidewalks, which is where it really is been. That way, when a resident or somebody has a sewer line, or they ended up doing a new tap, instead of cutting the roads, I'm telling you something, as soon as you resurface a road, it won't be a month later when someone's got to put a new sewer line in, and they're gonna be cutting the road, and then we figure a purpose, so, yes, and that will be part of that, and that, that's why.
Well, that needs to be.
Nine hundred and four.
Right, and that's movement.
And a bar of the.
No, sure it's not. So that's why we're gonna have to get a plan here. We just can't blindly just say, here's what we're gonna do. Get a good fixed plan, and make it be in phases, make it do the work sections first, and, and come forward, uh, but yes, getting those utilities out, and then also upgrades of. Uh, but yes, getting those utilities out, and then also upgrades of, and the infrastructure there. So, it's kind of, it's, it's a two-fold purpose, so it'll be a good thing.
I've got one more idea about Twinket Street. And as you said, it is a major artery in this town. In my opinion, it's what I would call an arterial route that the county ought to help us with. Now, that's a whole nother battle of tricks. So, but I, I think it's worth exploring the idea. I mean, when you're talking about a million to resurface it, and then at least, I don't know how much you ought to put the infrastructure under the sidewalks, maybe it's time to go and explore the idea of base, of some arterial routes that went through this.
Kind of like what we did with Yang Street, uh, resurfacing out there by that agron. I think the county actually handles some of that project for us. You know, we kind of work with them on some of that. But, but we're, we're gonna look at it like, see, I just wanted to meet with the council and kind of, this has been on my radar for a while, I'm just kind of wanting y'all to get feeling the loop and, and let the public know as well kind of what we're working on. Uh, and then we'll keep you, like I said, we'll get these phases, establish what can be done, when, how, and...
Yeah, but get some prices on moving the infrastructure.
Right.
Thank you, Chris. So, let's move on to item number ten, Ross.
If someone is under new ownership, and this is for malt beverage package retail, and there is nothing negative in the background shop, so who recommends a third one?
Item eleven, discussion of minutes, Bert calls. Ross, move on.
Okay. Uh, I was asked to look into what, um, should be in the minutes and how to amend the minutes. And according to, uh, our city government, we operate under Robert's Rules of Order by our ordinance. According to Robert's Rules of Order, the way it should work is that the clerk will take down the minutes and she'll, you know, she'll send out a draft. And generally, that draft is then sent to council who reviews it. When you go to the next meeting, uh, if everybody's had read the draft, then you can go ahead and approve the minutes without reading the minutes into the record. So, as you generally do, you'll, you know, make a motion to approve the minutes and then you, you vote on it. If anyone wants to correct the minutes, then that's done by motion, uh, and accepted and voted on to correct the minutes at the council meeting that you're seeking to approve. Okay? Now, the other, that raises the next issue as to what you put in the minutes.
Let me stop you right there.
Sure.
As a mayor, I can't make a motion. So, now, if I want something changed, I'd add it.
That's a very good question.
Let's see if we can add to it. Who did you get?
Well, let me, this is what, this is the caveat to everything I just said, is that right now, according to our procedures, we've adopted the Robert Rules of Order as our means of, you know, operating our government. Uh, but that doesn't mean we have to go under Robert's Rules of Order. I mean, we can certainly use it as a guide, and we can adopt any procedures that we want to, to operate and, and run our meetings. But most cities do use Robert's Rules of Order, but Robert's Rules of Order really was not designed with governments in mind. So, there is these little, you know, intricacies, uh, that local governments have when they're dealing with Robert's Rules of Order. But going to, you know, as I said, going to the minutes, and that's something we can certainly look at. But generally, the draft is made by the clerk, it's submitted to the council members, you look at it, you come to the meeting, if you want to approve, you approve them. If somebody wants to correct anything in the minutes, you, you make that motion correct. Now, that leads us to the other issue, what do you put in the, in the minutes? According to Robert's Rules of Order, what goes in the minutes is what they say, it's what was done and not what was said. So, generally, what's in the minutes is that, you know, precipitating a motion to, you know, have a cookout Saturday afternoon, set to invite, uh, Mariana, and, as you now should approve. Or you would have something that...
But none of the discussion about why it was a good thing to do or not.
Now, there, if you might have a, someone might come in and do a report, and then it, then you, you all have your books on Robert's Rules of Order. You can go and check and look at the examples they give in the minutes. But the cardinal rule is, you put down what was done, not what was said.
Oh, I might stop you right there. And you know where I'm going with it. The word has come to something, but he comes up and talks about that the city council gonna have a cookout.
Right.
And that goes in the minute. Prior to that, he said, we are gonna have steak, lobster, the steak is gonna be this thing. But that wasn't part of his motion. That's not what we moved on, that's not what we did.
Right.
It's just like the five meal thing I said that Julie mentioned. That was strong. She turned around, she, I'm not knocking it, she turned around and she looked at us. I was about to change my vote. I'm very passionate, and she talked about, it ought to be five meals instead of three. But her motion just said three, and I thought, well, that ought to be in there because that's strong. And, and, and maybe that's why the thing passed. So, that's what I'm saying. We're, we're, when you put down just what we did, I, I don't think you need to leave something out. Am I wrong?
Well, listen, all, all I'm, all I'm addressing, all I'm saying is, is basically what Robert's Rules of Order says.
Right.
And that's what I'm saying. That's what they say, just put down what was done, not was said. Now, it seems to me, and naturally, we have gone back many times and looked at what happened ten years ago and looked at the minutes and see who said what. Now, I would even say, it doesn't make any difference to me, but, you know, now that you have these recording devices, it's, you know, it's videotaped, it's now it's in the computer. If anybody wants to go to see what was said, they can look at the video or listen to, you know, pull it on the computer. So, I'd say, what I would encourage y'all to do, when you get a minute, go ahead and just look at your book on Robert's Rules of Order as they talk about the minutes and what should be in them. But certainly, you are at liberty to adopt whatever procedures you want and put whatever you want to have in the minutes. But again, you know, say, when you start talking about putting in the minutes what was said, I mean, you might as well quit everything that's, you know, who's gonna decide what was important and what wasn't, you know what I mean?
It'd be less work for Ron.
A lot less work.
As long as you're comfortable with that, I guess I agree with that.
So, what am I bringing up now?
What we're operating on now is Robert's Rules of Order.
Can I make a comment to that?
I want to see what Ron's...
Oh, so, yeah.
Um, as Rob said, Robert's Rules of Orders was put together without local governments in mind. I believe there's a happy medium. I don't think that it should be just what was done. I believe there should be a brief synopsis, because we have gone back to look at history just to be able to figure out what to do for the present. And what you're going to see, and you already have, is a briefer minute for me, based on what we discovered in our research. There are things that I don't have to put in there. I have a tendency to want everybody to see the true, the, the very big picture.
I agree.
Um, but I, I will be paring it down, but I still think it's important to get the gist of the conversation and then the action.
Okay.
Well, I was just gonna say, now that we're recording the meetings, audio recordings, video, I can actually get on the website and look at, who looks at the minutes? How many people in a month are pulling up the council minutes and reviewing? How many people are looking at videos? Ninety percent of the people look at the videos and ten percent look at the minutes.
But...
Just to say what the public is looking at, they're looking at the multimedia, something they can see and hear.
Will those videos stay on the shelf and never forever?
Yes. They're actually archive on our website and they're on YouTube.
Well, I've got a question, but I'm glad, about this. Recently, you did some research on the library, on the regional library at Kinston. We look back at meetings from nineteen eighty-five. If there had been a video in nineteen eighty-five, would we have anything today that could play that video? You know, thirty years later?
Everything has to be upgraded. If it becomes a record, as time changes, you have to be able to play it.
So, are you doing that? I mean, you know, will you periodically go back and the things you're taping now, you'll update them? Is that... I mean, does somebody do that?
With this digital media that we do nowadays?
Yeah.
I can put it on videotape, I can put it on a DVD, I can put it on anything you want it to play. Older things are the same way. If you have an old Betamax, you can rent a Betamax player still, and you can connect it to your computer and convert it to digital.
I am not for, uh, and this is just my personal feeling as a clerk, I am not for moving from a minute book to digital media as our official minutes.
Right.
I don't agree with that. But it does give us some additional measure to look back on if we need to.
It definitely does, and I'm, listen, your videos helped me a lot, and I've looked at many of them through the budgeting process, because once I was sitting, I had to miss a meeting.
It's just an additional tool.
Right. But I do have another question. Uh, once or twice, I have made a prepared statement as to that be attached to the minutes, so that ten years from now, if someone asks to know what I thought about something, I would like for that possibility, I think, you know, in eight years, I've attached maybe two statements.
If you will look, you'll see that they are there.
I have, I have.
And they'll go into the, as they're...
And I want that possibility to remain.
As the actual, if it's requested, it goes.
But in lieu of what he just said, she, she filled something out, and she's done several great things. And we didn't really discuss it, they were just in there, um, because of what she felt. What you're saying is, we're just about taking action on it, we didn't do it, it didn't go to the meeting.
Well, basically, a- a- again, we're looking at Robert's Rules of Order, what that says. As Rhonda correctly points out, it really wasn't designed for local governments. But I think that, and there may be, there might be happy medium, but what you, what you find is, is that Rhonda does the draft, and then, you know, she puts in what she feels was the gist of the...
The sum.
Right. And then, but...
We have the chance to amend those at the public meeting.
But then, you know, you think that somebody might have said was important, you want that in the minutes, and you think something was important, you want in the minutes, and you think something was important, and all of a sudden, you know, we've got the whole, the whole, whole meaning of beta in the minutes.
Yeah.
And I don't know how to really deal with that, but, um...
If a specific request is made at a meeting for something to go in the minutes, it goes in the minutes. I mean, that's just...
But what happened, it sounds like we were in violation of our own protocol when the request was made to change something.
Yes.
But we had done it in pass. So, it was a little easier, he made all kinds of changes.
Well, I have never done any before, but we did not have a standard.
Yeah.
So, I handled it the way that I did. I wanted everybody to know and everybody to have the opportunity at that time. I'm glad that we're talking about it so that we know that this is where, and I agree, this is where any request to change should be made. That gives you the time to discuss.
Because I never had the chance to review the minutes prior to the meeting changed and then submitted, resubmitted as...
No, everyone did.
I know, but I...
It was sent to everyone.
I know, but then within a couple of hours, it was now, you know, there's been one request to change, but there was no public discussion...
Right.
...to change it, to agree to change it. So, there was a unilateral recommendation to change...
Right.
Which should not happen. Should not happen. It should be discussed here. So, that, that's my, that's my concern. You know, if I get the minutes sent to me tomorrow from tonight's meeting, and I say, well, no, you know, I, I, I made ten more statements that I want to include, or Johnny made three statements that weren't included, and I, and I just unilaterally kind of say change that without the discussion around the table. That's, that's where we violated our...
Well, only you and I need one, you, because you, I called, put it in, and, and now we know. We've been able to make that change if that publicly is settled for some...
Well, the, what I would, what I would suggest, I think that you could go back and revisit it, you know, because it wasn't done properly. I think you could do that. The only caveat to that is, of course, they were approved at the meeting.
And that was still an opportunity to discuss, if you're just...
Right. Now...
But that change is still in there.
That change is in there, but at the time, when I asked about that, I was told, it's under review. We'll, we'll deal with it at a later meeting, because I asked about it. You know, I said, I, I, you know, I, I, I want to know how one of us, I mean, I sent that email out to everybody, and I said, how can one of us change, you know, maybe recommendation to change what's already been submitted by the clerk, and it get changed?
Well, they changed it, just added a couple of things.
Well, that's a change, though.
Well, no, it's a, it's a, right.
Yeah, but that is a change.
Yeah, that's a change. So...
But, but, okay.
Whether you put in or took out, it's a change.
Well, it's under, it's under review then, we can still, we can vote to put that back.
I think that what you can do with any stuff, if you want to correct the minutes, you certainly got that opportunity.
Except that I can't make them correct today. So, you know, I can't, you know.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
The big bucks, but...
Well, that's a very, that's a very interesting question, because you may have some leaders there, and they look at the minutes and say, there's something wrong there.
Well, when someone makes a motion to approve the minutes, that's your opportunity to speak your piece.
It's been done during discussion.
There's always a motion to approve the...
Yeah, during discussion, period.
Because somebody will always move to approve the minutes.
Right.
And then the discussion, you can say, yeah.
So, Rob, a little bit sure I got it right. We don't need to take a vote, but what we're gonna do is an augmented version of Robert's Rules of Order, and Rhonda is gonna do a synopsis, basically, an executive summary, if you will, what happened. And then she sends it out, we review it, and then when it begins the meeting, if there's a problem, or...
If you want to change.
Or we don't recollect, have it this way.
Or if you want to add something, right.
Okay.
By motion.
But it is, it is by motion.
And we still have it, the cameras and everything else.
It's part of the motion when you're approving it.
Right.
Okay, but if it comes up during discussion, in my case, because I can't make a motion, making it to approve, we have a second to approve, to discuss.
And then you have discussion.
That I say, I think that was a pretty strong thing. I would like to see it there. Then we have the option to go back and redo the motion.
Well, I think you could make a friendly amendment to add in there that the cookouts are paid for by the attorney, and then...
Well, I guess my question was, the reason this brought up, and I'll just speak very frankly, I didn't understand why that one statement, there were other parts of, of my statement during that budget meeting that I thought were equally impassioned. Why just that one segment?
Well, I must have missed your other passion.
You know, so...
That's five, I lost that, no.
So, um...
I mean, that's a quick fact.
So, that, you know, that, that was, that's...
That's a...
Do you see, do you see what I'm saying?
Well, that's real strong.
So, um...
It was, Jamie, but it was also in great contrast to your own position.
Yeah, so it was...
Well, that I do...
I mean, and some of the mention that was in your position.
Or passionate much, and, uh, well, okay, let me ask you one. Has it been felt, maybe, that we need to go back and fix it, or did it want to stay on like it is?
Well, I mean, the bits have been proved, and so I, I would think that, you know, if somebody would like to correct those minutes, to add something in, they could do that. So, I don't think, you know, uh, my understanding is that the minutes has reflected or correct what was said, was said.
Right.
And it was...
But they were correct before that change was made, too.
That's true. Um, so if you, if you would like to go back and, because I don't know, do you, do you still have the original draft of the minutes without the change?
Probably not.
You did warn me about that.
I know what the change was, so it's not that difficult.
To be fair to you, I mean, we probably need to take it in public media and say, and decide if we want to put that tape in the file. Although, yeah, I think you can put it in there, but if it's three to two, don't put it in there.
Well, you might look back over some of your, the tapes, Julie, and see if there's something else you'd like to add.
Right.
That's right.
Right.
Sure, that's right.
So Louis-
You put it in there.
There you go. So, yeah, because there, you know, and it's almost where you, I understand what you're saying, Rhonda, where do you draw the line? You do try to just capture the big picture and, and the, you know, sort of the high points, if you will, for lack of a better term. You know, and, and, well, I think-
It sounds like consensus here, not to me, is that anytime we're gonna change a meeting's minutes-
And it's been done here.
We've done it here.
And I think that we'll solve all, exactly, but, um, while-
What we're taking from this one?
While we're on the subject, can we talk about when we have public input from citizens? Um, I know we had said that generally, public input is at the, what I call the regular council meeting where we vote, and we don't generally have public input during the workshop. I would like for us to consider having public input at the workshop. This is our time to discuss and to think about things, and like tonight, we had-
And you do.
Specific audi-, yes, specific audience questions, and, and they were good questions and good dialogue. I'd like for us to reconsider that. I think public input at workshops is very important.
I, I would, too, and use your five-minute rule.
Yeah.
And, and maybe also say, at the request of any council member. I don't know.
Well, let me, let, let me say this, we adopted some rules of procedure, and doing this research, I found them.
Oh, good.
From nineteen ninety-five. If it's amenable to the city manager, we can pull them and look at them and update them.
I think that's a great consideration. Just so we're all on the same plane, because, you know, you have Jamie that served on, you know, in the past, and things were done one way, and, you know, Chris and I are both new, and, you know, so that, so it's, so that we all understand-
That's a very good point.
-what the rules are.
I have another one I'm going to be updating, but that's not on the agenda.
And, and as I said, when you, that, that's a great idea, I mean, you can develop your own rules of procedure for workshop, public meetings, however you all want to handle it, Roberts Rule of Order is usually a pretty good, just kind of general guide about how to conduct your meetings. You all can just set whatever you want to do as far as getting public input, and how you want to conduct your meetings.
That's the idea. Stand at public telephone.
How you do it?
I stand at public telephone, please, and I must do room, Roberts Room, or just stand at public telephone, please.
Okay, good morning, I thank you guys, you're good to come here. City manager, I think.
Very quickly, I don't know if y'all noticed it or not, but, uh, Third Street's paved now, and the third plus is cleaned up. I don't know if they got the strip done, I was down there earlier this weekend, they were marking it off, but that report took place. Pardon me, also, uh, if you travel Fair Lake Ridge, and you got out there in the past few weeks, it was closed, there were requests of the bridges. That's also open now, and it's nuts.
That was a county, a county, yeah.
Yeah, it's just outside of Sillings, and it's, uh, two bridges are being built. Have you ever been very near before?
Oh, very.
Several rates, it's very nice out there now, right? Uh, the papers I handed out to you earlier, uh, we'll start with this one first.
Just right here.
This is a, a general overview, and this is like a fifty thousand foot level of where we are as far as cash goes.
Thank you.
In the general fund, this is general fund, okay? You got this one there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, bottom line is, uh, projections, you can go through this, and I'm trying to get through it quickly, Ken. We start off at about two point three million, uh, July thirty-first. We had expenditures, the unaudited balance says of eight thirty-one twenty thirteen was one point six million. Uh, we have, uh, projected deposits and expenditures, and as you keep going down. At nine thirty, the projected unaudited balance is, uh, a million dollars, for just rounding these numbers off.
Where, where is that figure, uh, I got you there?
Million of fifty-two. And then we have lost deposits, we project are coming in, insurance premium, eight hundred thousand, we have not received it yet, but it should be here any day now. Uh, and then the fire protection, that's the county's contribution to the, uh, fire department. Uh, and then the ten thirty, uh, the October expenditures of a million dollars, that brings it back down to one point one million. And then the service fund transfers, uh, so at the end of October thirty-first, twenty thirteen, we're looking at about eight hundred ninety-two thousand dollars on hand. Now, say all that to say this, have we not had the insurance premium tax? We, for all practical purposes, had zero at the end of October to operate on. Uh, the note down at the bottom of that page is, uh, we've received about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in property taxes, they're starting to trickle in, so that's gonna help a lot. Uh, and that's very fast, any questions on that right now?
And you will continue to receive that, for your center, so this figure will be-
It, it's gonna go up, okay?
And the, the loss revenues lags thirty days. If y'all notice on the report, and just want to make sure it all, y'all something.
And as Rhonda just reminded me, the alcohol revenue start coming in, too, so we're gonna be okay, we're, general funds, okay. So you can read these. This sheet is debt. And I'm not gonna go through it tonight, I'm willing to read it, and if you have any questions, email me, call me, whatever, you want to, uh, come by and see me, I'd like to do that. But on the left-hand side, you've got all of the debt topics we have there, and then what was-
But this isn't all funds.
This is all funds, okay? Uh, so you've got the debt, you've got the date that the loan was approved or renewed, you've got the interest rate on the current loan, and if you'll notice, there are some of the words says it varies, okay? And there's a note down at the bottom. The GMA lease pool, interest rate on certificates of participation, that's what CFP stands for, is about four point seven five, is four point seven five percent. But then after you've, uh, add in the credits that we received from the certificates, the, it nets out about point three six percent interest on those loans. So, and in some cases, we'll have a lot of times when we actually get a credit on it, because returns were much more than anticipated. So that's a good program, uh, and the, uh, if you go all the way to the right side, it says remaining years, uh, you'll notice those are the dates that those loans, um, matured, and, uh, we have November thirteen, November thirteen, December thirteen, and November thirteen, so four of those will be coming off this fiscal year, they'll be paid out. And we will continue to update these and, and put it in a format that's as, as useful, friendly as we possibly can get. Any questions?
This looks really good, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Lois, can you say it again?
Where is the city net there?
It's the first one I've got.
First one. The, our, a refinancing, I think.
Yeah, you told us, uh, many months ago, you were working for us, that's, we appreciate you.
Well, Ms. Lois has done a wonderful job, and she has a birthday coming up this weekend. She's gonna be actually, and, uh, she's gonna go on party, hardy this weekend.
She should, she works hard enough here.
Well, we're, we're putting it together, uh, all of the, uh, that's my birthday, all of you, uh, so-
It's coming up soon.
They're coming, they're coming here October fif- fif- first?
First, yeah, they'll be here.
They'll be here first of the month.
And everything will be ready to be audited. We're gonna have everything ready for them to get started, and maybe a few things that we have to do, like they get here, but they can go forward.
But what do you think we can't do?
Need to get the report out.
Is there one of these that's coming off?
I don't know, fourteen is coming off.
I don't think it's coming off.
Right.
All right, I'm gonna go to the call meeting, uh, if you would, really, I'll call it, and you, whatever you have to, you can come in.
We called the meeting, we're, we're gonna call the meeting. Uh, Bert, you want to discuss the ordinance on the, uh, Mobile Home Park Rezone?
Um, we received an application requesting a rezon in West Portion property located in the County parcel map. T zero thirty-two, eighty-three-one, and entire Portion property, T zero thirty-two oh, twenty-nine A, uh, from current zoning, city tip to residential ten, to city tip to Mobile Home Park. Uh, this application came from, uh, Chetis Hurst, and, um, Hurst, hi, Hurst, LCC. Basically, what it amounts to is that, um, the use of the property, and, and I want to make it clear, because this is confusion, this does not affect the size of the current Mobile Home Park that's there. It's already, use-wise, by use, it is already Mobile Home Park, although it is zoned R-ten. Um, it also does not affect the properties that are on reach, that are residential. Um, the one property on the inside already belongs to Hurst, and, um, it's already got mobile homes on it, that's been there, I don't know how long, as long as I know of, it's been there, the lots are there. Whether you zone it or not, it's gonna remain Mobile Home Park by use. So what this is, technically, is a correction of zoning, that had I caught it, when we were doing the last two zoning changes, we would have changed it anyway, because that is the true use, it needed to be corrected. Um, it does not take away from the, the home that's in the front, that is the lot that's being split, splits the back, back off. It's already split by fence and by use, it's got multi-use on it. That corrects a problem with that, because we're not supposed to really have multiple homes on one lot anymore. Um, it also allows the lady that lives there to purchase her home, which is what she wants to do, from what I've been told. Um, now it is, it's, there's no way that she can do with the other lots there. Um, it is the staff recommendation, it was the recommendation of the land development, I mean, the, uh, planning and zoning, thank you, it's been a long day, man. Planning and zoning, um, were unanimous in their vote on this when they saw it last month. Um, it is the recommendation that staff could approve the rezon on the grounds that what it does is correct our zoning guidelines, to the guidelines, to more match use as closely as possible to the proper zone that it's used.
We've already protected the public hearing, uh, through that meeting.
And we tabled it, so that we could, Johnny could be here for this discussion. Then we tabled it to this night.
That's in, that's in, it's different, sorry.
Good, speak.
Ready for a motion?
Yes. I might imagine that we've proved a reasoning.
Second, now we can discuss.
Now, let's discuss.
Okay, let's discuss.
This part. If you look at it, if you, if you never seen, if you, if you, you're just hearing about it. If you say, it just look like it's just shouldn't be. Understand it's Mobile Home Park. It's, 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 it's better Mobile Home Park, it was from all in from Mobile Home Park to College Circle, Mobile Home Park. They are some existing properties, Stan, had been there for, for eighteen years. But what he's trying, what, what Mr. Hurst is going to do, is doing, is, is just putting one, two mobile homes on the one, one lot space. It's, it's just, to me, it's just too crowded. And I showed it to Chris yesterday, and I don't know what his take on it, but he's just taking this book and putting this book on top of it. You're not making this book no better, you're just adding trouble to it. It's, it's gonna be a Mobile Home Park, we got what we do. But what I'm saying, let's don't just, he don't just need to put that, mobile, two mobile homes in, where he's trying to think about it.
Johnny, okay, your concern is that this will allow him to put two mobile homes on it.
That's what I'm saying.
And Bert?
The way it's stated, it currently stands for the mobile home park was put in whenever, and, and I don't know when. Um, it was established with, with X number of lots, and it's really based on the connections, the hookups that are there, I mean, they're there already. So, and what I mean by hookups, power, water, et cetera, um, what's there is there. I can't make him reduce that, okay, that's the law, I can't do it.
You can't put two.
Well, if there's two spaces there, and I've gone over there and looked, and there are, I mean, he is correct, you can't put an extra mobile home in the, where those are at now. The reason is, it used to be one, I mean, there'd already been one there, and it's always been, it's now been replaced back. There will, there would not be, we would not be able to allow him to increase the number of spaces in that area, period, because he would have to follow to the new land development code, which states that he would have to go in and have a certain amount of land space, certain amount of things, this is who's doing a new one. But the thing is, is it has always been, for all practical purposes, in the history of America, and at a mobile home park, by use. It was established in its day with X number of spaces. It's that way with all the older mobile home parks, were established with X number of spaces. We have not allowed increases in that, will not allow increases in that, um, we can't allow increases in that. And what I mean by that is, if those things have a space there, if they have a connection there, that is a space. Um, if it had ninety spaces, we would only allow ninety spaces, and that is in the tax record, so how many is there? So to say that it's increasing, I will say this, it does put another trailer where there's not one. It's only because there's a vacant trailer space there already, but it doesn't increase the overall number within the mobile home park.
Excuse me, I do, if you go back to the old, to all this Mobile Home Park, the space there, then none of these, these South College Circle spaces will be there, because he just opened the road, he just opened the street, South College Circle goes to a park and stop, okay? If he don't bring this all the way up to here, then these spaces that he talking about wouldn't be there. He closes, he closes this street.
You're talking about this street right here?
Yeah, he closes this. He, see, the only, the only, the only way that was in there at one time was from, uh, 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 Old Omegle Road. When he closed this off, put three mobile homes across the block up there, to close off the entrance to Old Omegle Road, to go around to South College.
So this is the only way in?
Right. And if we take, if we go and do what we were supposed to do, cut off South College, like it was old, the old time, then the only way he could, he'd have to move these two mobile home, three mobile homes here, to, to allow the entrance to come back in to the, to the park.
Does he have to have more than one entrance? Well, no, I understand what you're saying, but I was, I didn't know if that would be the way to do that, is if he was part of-
Okay, then, let's, let's just go in there and shut off South College Circle. Let, let's just say, okay, Mr. Hurst, you can't go, we, the, the street's not there.
When was that changed, John, do you have any records?
I'm sorry.
When the, when the entrance was changed? Do we have any records that we've been found of?
It's been that way since I've been with the city, and I came here in 'oh five, so I don't know.
Kevin, wait.
'oh five.
Okay.
But that's as long as I've been with the city, tip to yourself.
When did they close it off, John?
Uh-
It was closed when I came here in nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay, probably in seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-seven, in the late seventies. Late seventies, early eighties, I can't remember, because, uh, okay, um-
So what would have been the procedure for closing that?
I, I don't know, I don't know, in fact, I don't know how he, how, how it was closed. Uh, to, to the public like that, you know, how, how can you just go ahead and just say, okay, I'm gonna close this off?
Right, I bet it had to come before this council.
It had to, I mean, but, but, the, the commission then, the city commission, it had to come before that, then, for them, to, for him to, to, to allow him to do this. Cause, cause you, you, I showed you yesterday.
Well, I, uh, I called Johnny, because I just didn't know that much about the situation. And I said, well, can I come up there and look at it, and just have to eyeball it? Because sometimes you see a map, you can get an idea of it, sometimes when you actually see it, it's a different thing. So anyway, we went out there, and, uh, we walked over there, talked to some of the president's, and there are hookups on that property. So I assumed that, you know, there'll be an addition, additional trailer. It sounds like to me, no matter what actually we take, it's pretty much gonna stay the same anyway.
True.
Um, but, uh, anyway, the concerns of people that I've heard, was, uh, there's already, like Johnny's talking about, one entrance, so you're putting more people in there with less access, and apparently, there's already been an emergency that happened, a fire, and it blocked them through one access, which is one car, outside of one car, that's it. And someone called nine one one, and they couldn't get to them, somebody had breathing problems. So we've already had an incident out there where somebody needed help and couldn't get to it, because there was already a problem out there, and the infrastructure, the roads, wouldn't allow it. I see that's the problem. Uh, and so my fear is, if we, if we approve it, and then put more trailers out, and puts more people being served off this, already, in my opinion, not enough infrastructure. And I went there, actually, I bought it, and talked to two neighbors out there, and they told me, we don't want this. So from what I've heard, of course, it's not my district, it's Johnny's district, from what I've heard, the neighbors there are not in favor of it, based off the existing infrastructure, so, but, uh, what I had yesterday, not-
So we'd have, we'd, we'd have to go back, uh, and look at, uh, see when, when, when it was closed.
Can you show me on this map about where that entrance was closed, was covered up, just roughly, doesn't fit that, just kind of help me get an idea? See where all the silver is there?
While they're doing that, Bert?
Here's all the, any all the, any, yes.
So this has, he's stopped out, he's, he's, this has, this has, you know, that's what it is.
King of the-
This is, this is, the city, this is the city, this boy is a street man, see what I'm saying? See, see, that's why he went to, see, South College Circle, this, this boy is this man, this, this mobile home, it's not here.
It was, you did come in and out down here.
Yeah, come, yes, on the, you can come in, or the middle, and now, they, 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 there's an interest here.
But not here.
Yeah, no. It's over there.
Bert, let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
When the commission back then did close that entrance up all over there, that gave you more mobile home lots?
It would, it would, you're right, there was a load, as you know, there were ninety-eighties. Correct.
And he doesn't have that many originally to put extra.
Well, saying again, I don't, I can tell you this, the zoning that we have now, where we have zoning per se, came in in the mid-eighties. Uh, about eighty-six, I think is what I found, eighty-four, four, five, eighty-five, I did our range.
Planning and zoning, boy.
Correct, and, and this probably was done, I, I know it was open through the early eighties, I know that, I used to work down there, so, I mean, I know it was open through the early eighties. Before then, I hate to say this, Mary, but it's kind of a free-for-all, if you understand what I'm saying, that they're really what- Before then, I hate to say this, Mary, but it's kind of a free for all, if you understand what I'm saying, that there really wasn't a lot of regulations in a sense like that. So I can't say that it was closed or open during the time that we're in the current zoning that we're in even now, where we have zones. But I do know that what happens, generally those mobile home parks were established, and once they were established with X number of spaces, and, and they may have added spaces through time, cause some of those trailer parks have grown, out of country group, you know, during that period of time. Um, and they used to live there, and it's more there than they work when I lived there. So I mean, it did change, but the thing is, is now, it is established in, in, in our, from a development standpoint. I can't unestablish it, because if I did, it would take away from a business person's livelihood, I can't take away something from somebody that's already there. The law won't allow me to do that. I can't go in and say, you've got to close eight spaces and this trailer park with too many people in it. Now, it doesn't mean that, you know, that we, you know, something could be changed in the, in the LDC, but the bottom line is, is that is, was, was under a different code, if there was a code, or at least established by being there. And even if he shut the trailer park down, if he came back within a year and put a trailer park back in there, I would have to allow him those number of spaces. After a certain period of time, the law says that it changes you, but I, I, I'm not, my issue is really not as much with the number of trailers. That number of trailers has been in there in the past up until pretty recent. I mean, it's not like he's adding extra, he is adding extra, granted, but only because of vacancies, um, and the past.
And he did, they should have closed off the street.
Right, and that's my argument that he did that, I wasn't here, I don't know, I mean, obviously he did.
Cause I knew he closed off the street.
Right, but that still doesn't stop, if, if you pass this or you don't pass this, and he wants to put a trailer in that spot, I'm gonna issue him a permit for the trailer spot. It's not anything to do with whether this is, whether it's envy or not, okay? It's by use, I have to. I can't deny a permit, it's a liable permit to anybody, you or anybody else. It'd be like me saying, you know? So, uh, it's, it is the number it is. And the same thing applies to the other trailer parks in town, they're established. So if there's a space there, and it's established, and somebody comes in and says, I wanna put it in lot number H1, and, and it's a spot, and I verified it's a spot, and it's been there for the last X number of years, in this case, at least forty years, cause it just said in the seventh. And I'm gonna say you can put it there, period, as long as we're fire safe and hookup safe and, you know, guided by the codes, so.
Why would he?
Roland, do you wanna shout?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm not, I'm curious. Why would he not have to have another entrance, though, if there's that concentration of residents?
Well, at the time, I'm, I'm not arguing that point, and I don't know how he closed it off, I, I don't know who closed it off, I don't know how it was closed off, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, being straight up. But, um, at that period of time, up until this new LDC was put in place, there was not requirements for two exits and entrances. Now they are, I mean, it's, it's an absolute.
So if we, let me ask you this, if we change the zoning so that it's compliant with the LDC, then does he have to comply with?
Has nothing to do with the use of the property, it's not gonna change it.
No, I'm not saying that, but he then will be required to have two entrance, two.
No, because it doesn't make everything, cause he is under, I can't make every, if I did, then everybody that has a, something that doesn't meet, it'd be, you're talking about a disaster, it would be a disaster.
It would be like your business having to come up to a different standard.
To, to their standard when you were built that in, or, you know, I mean, I can go back and think about properties that different people own at this table, and I would have to make you bring them all up to this current standard, and you couldn't go back in them till they were. That's not, that is, that you're talking about a disaster.
Well, I say we have no choice.
Well, you know, I mean, you can deny it, but it's not gonna stop the problem that he's, that, that, that Mr. Terrell is explaining.
Well, how can we fix that problem?
Um.
With the tools that we have?
I, with the tools you have, you can. You would have to change and apply new tools, you would have to create new tools. You would have to require retrofitting of, of, say, mobile home parks with a required two exits. And if you do that, then it's across the board, it's everybody's gotta have at least two exits, or more. I mean, you can do that, but that would be required, then you run into situations that, you know, you have more, you have, you know, it's just, it's, it's.
Kind of dard if you do and dard if you don't.
Well, the, the reality of this is, there are some situations out there currently where even if you required them to have two exits, they couldn't have it.
Right.
It's just impossible.
There's no.
Right, there's no way for them to have.
Right.
The bottom line is, council is this, whether you approve the rezoning or you don't approve the rezoning, he can put the same number of mobile homes he has in there right now. That's not gonna change, regardless of when the way it was closed, not closed. And Mr. Terrell, I understand your concerns, we get it, and I know, I know you know exactly what I'm talking about. But, but the bottom line is this, grandfathered in, that park's grandfathered in, so the same number of lots that are there now are there. I think the one benefit of this is, by doing this rezoning, the lady can buy the house and she can resell the home property on it, and not everyone through rental property and they'll take care of it. That's, that's the upside.
Well, I'll tell you, when I visited there, and I'll go back to this, cause we really had a discussion on this since, with the one entrance, the road out there, and you've been out there, I know you have, it's, we're about disposed of when it probably was a lawsuit. If one of those roads is blocked, then somebody has to call 911, and they can't get to them. Tell you something right now, that's the case.
That's on front of court.
I'm just saying, there's a problem, cause there's city, there's city, hang on there, there's city residents out there right now, and when they call 911, they're gonna expect to get serviced, nobody do all those roads, they don't care. So at some point, it's gonna be our problem regardless. That's all I'm saying. So, maybe we need to put it on the radar to either get that, donate it to the city, you know? Well, I'm just saying, well, you, those who know it's gonna be an expense, there isn't a right.
No, no, I'm not saying.
And you know that, and that's why you take that case.
No, sir, what I'm saying is this, the, it's private property, the, the, uh, mobile home park owner now has all the liability for that. If we take those roads, which are also standard roads as you well know, uh, then we can do get the liability then.
It's not different, it's not by the bridge.
It's no different than Saks Ridge, it's no different than, than Forest Lakes, or any of these other places out here that have roads that are private property.
It's bad shape.
I understand that, but it's the park owner's responsibility.
Well, what can we do about that, Bert? Well, I mean, bottom line, we've done something, but we, it, it's very difficult to go back and correct fifty years ago, I mean, I'm being straight with you. But currently now, any subdivision goes in, mobile home or regular, has to have two entrance exits, I mean, it's required, before it didn't. So you have subdivisions, whether they're mobile home parks or they're subdivision houses, all over the city and county with one entrance exit. So the same problem there is existing from a safety standpoint, I'm not arguing, I agree with you, that's why I wanted that in there, to have the two entrance exits, just because of that. You remember we discussed that with the triple I part? I remember that. And that's the reason. But as it stands, I have no power to go back and say, you've got to give two exits to everything, I mean, you know what I mean, every truck, cause some of them, you couldn't, you have some subdivisions, you could not make them have two entrances if you wanted to, but from this day forward, it'll never happen again, granted. But going back to cases in the versus, is a different.
What's wrong? Go ahead.
Is there nothing within code that he's in violation of, that we require him to repair that road, like any other code enforcement?
It's a private, it's a private, right.
But I know, but like, but, and I'll use the example of the twentieth century library, but through code enforcement, we were able to get that building repaired, why can't we get that road repaired?
And, and I can give you a prime example, a situation right in the near similar to this was in the town and country trailer park. It can be as bad there as it is down there, we'll be glad. But what it took was us working with the owner, not us, you see what I'm saying, we had no way to force them into that. We just had to explain that it's very difficult for our services to get in there, I mean, we had.
Have we done that with Mr. Hurst?
We had discussed with Mr. Hurst the need to improve roads, but it's his roads, I mean, I can't make him do that. You know, something else, there's only one fire hydrant off the city side, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just giving that. The fire hydrant, my knowledge, was right here. So the people over here, they get a fire, they're gonna have to wait for a connection, and they're gonna have to string, and it's not, of course, a straight line, it's not a hands in line, they're gonna have to string the hose around, when they get there, the house can be burned. So, it's just, it's not a good setup, as, as it is, and I need to, you know, that's, it's, it's, there's not much we can do about it, cause it's not fair to those citizens.
Think about town and country trailer park too, I mean, you know, I haven't been over there and looked at their fire hydrants, they all built the same situation. It's, it's an unfortunate situation, it's unfortunate that it was allowed to be this way. But it is, by use it is.
And that's kind of what we don't want to do in the future, we don't wanna have to come back where, you know, twenty-five, thirty years from now, and I'm no longer here, and go, I said, why did they let this happen? And that's where we're at.
And this rezoning does not open the door to make.
It doesn't open any door to anything, it does not. I mean, other than the zoning itself, that's all that affects, it doesn't affect the occupancy, it doesn't affect the use, it doesn't affect the anything, really. Now, once it becomes a mobile home park, it'd have to be rezoned to become residential, or it's just a single home residential, but it's all, it's not that already, so. I, I don't know, other than completely revamping the whole LDC, that you correct those things, and that would be requiring to put people in a situation where, as the lady mentioned, I, I bought a sign, why are you gonna make me stop using it? Well, the same principle here, I bought this property, I'm using it for this, are you gonna now make me where I can't use it anymore? I don't know how busy for any of that is, doesn't seem to be very much.
But what we, what we do, do now, uh, I, I would use the example, I think it's former of, uh, Hopper and Woodlock, there was a one acre lot there that had five mobile homes on it at one time, I think it's down to two now.
It's three, actually, I think it's three.
But what we do, because it's nonconforming, when, yeah, six months we're here now.
It depends, but most times they tell us a year, that's what it does.
So we keep telling these things, if they leave that thing vacant for one year, we keep track of that, and they can't put no one back in there, and we move back in.
Why, why can't you do that?
Well, if you've got this mobile home park.
It's not, it's not nonconforming.
Nonconforming, it's conforming. So.
That was one of my.
The time for changes is when you have new ownership rolling in. That's your window. And what could happen then? That's your window.
As long as it's all mobile home park, it's not a mobile home park.
Right.
I mean, if, if it goes from owner, owner, that, it's not, the use spaces.
Well, upgrades can be, I mean, when we have a new business come in, we have new inspections done, and there are certain things that they are required to do, if they haven't met the standard, that's, that's the only changes that would be able to be made.
Right, but that's more of a zoning situation, safety, public safety, I'm not saying not what he's talking about about public safety, I'm saying, but from a use standpoint, if a use is there, a use is there. And, and the only thing, there's only two things that change that use, is somebody choosing to change it, which would come to y'all, or somebody saying abandon it, or not have it for that use for a certain period of time. Then it could not go back to that nonconforming use, or that noncompliant use. But in this case, that's not gonna happen, because one trailer in that trailer park constitutes it to be a mobile home park, one mobile home. Like I said, if there's one in there, it's still a mobile home park, and if he decided that one day he's gonna put them all back in there, somebody could. So that's the thing, and, you know, it's, it's actually two different matters, and I understand, um, but I don't know how to correct it, I really don't.
Now, that's Roma's original copy, you might like that, if you can write on that.
Oh, I'm not gonna.
That's just, no, you can, that's not an original.
Oh, okay.
I'm not gonna write, okay.
You're good, you're good. You don't wanna upset us, Roma. I'm sorry.
Okay, but, but I was saying, when it was all extra park, Old Omega Road, it, it was two entrances. There was an out and in, entrance, exit. They're gone. They're gone.
And that was probably done when we put up here tonight, your phone work, we had any zoning with.
Right in that period of time, um.
You know what happened? They put three mobile homes and put an entrance in.
Right.
But just keep in mind, density factors back then were a lot tighter than they are now too. I mean, you, you had mobile home parks that were set up to have a density that's now would be less than a third, or what, even not even that, you know? I mean, it would be, um, probably ten percent what it is, what it was then, so, and that's something else we'd address with the LDC, that, that solve that problem in the future.
Well, man, what was that you said about?
What was that, man?
After the ninety-five, it was all new ownership, is that what you said?
So at ninety-five, it was still, it was done when?
No, I said.
They were in the zone, we were in the zone, okay.
Yeah, I said, what, what could be it was, if, if the owner tried, if you bought it, or I bought it.
What do you have to do?
If, 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 if I bought it, I'd still, I, it's still a mobile home park, and it has the same number of connections it has now.
So it doesn't matter if a new owner gets it now?
That doesn't change it.
That doesn't change it.
And that doesn't open that door to require that change, yeah.
Well, this is a discontinuation of use for a certain period of time.
Well, it's just a bad situation, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Buddy just said that he recollected the double entrance, for the other entrance being there in ninety-five, which would've been after.
And that's right, I didn't know, I knew it was open in the eighties, that's why I'm.
I think it was re-researched, or they did. I'm telling you, we're, we're a lawsuit away from that, looking to, not just the property.
But it's all proper property, I, I don't issue that.
Well, and then come back and say, they gonna do the research, we're talking about right now, about the double entrance.
Oh, 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 about us, sure.
Right, and then, so that's what I'm saying, what would that?
I can do the, I can research it for you all, if that's what you want me to do.
About two entrances.
I'm taking notes on.
Well, let me go ahead and say this, uh, when I was on the council from ninety-two to ninety-seven.
I bet you I approved it, John.
It seemed like, I remember something about, I wouldn't play.
So it's your fault, is what I'm saying.
No, I, I don't know, it'd be.
But make the motion then.
I just don't remember.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
For me, Roma, I, I like that, I like that research.
I've made some notes here.
Yeah.
I, I'd be interested if it was ninety-two, ninety-seven.
Well, then, may I amend my motion, or do we have to, since we have a second, what do we need?
Wait, okay, we've got a motion, and a second on the table, then we've gotta go back and do a, a, uh, like we did the other night, let's say, uh, start with a name. Altern, an alternate, an alternate motion.
Amendment to the motion, I know it's the main motion.
Okay. Amendment.
And I do that, since I made the motion.
You made the main motion, right?
Yes.
You should do a main motion.
He makes.
That motion drops, you do a new, new motion.
That's right.
Oh, wait, now, but are we dropping it, am I just, I'm just dropping?
What, what, maybe what you could do is this, if you would, uh, if we have a second.
We have a second, but she's changing it, so, according to Robert's order, that motion drops and we have a new motion.
That's true. But I thought you, I thought the vote could only die if you did something to make it that, I mean, right now, I see.
You didn't call the question, we don't have a vote. We don't have a vote to die.
Okay, so I never called the question, so that's, which gets us out.
No, I wanna, so I, yeah, you can withdraw the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna withdraw the motion.
I'm drawing my second.
Okay, now we're back to.
Well, I wanna make a new motion, that we allow Roma to do the research that we need to make an important decision on, on this, and that we, um, can we have that by the next council meeting, is that too soon?
So what you wanna do is table this subject until the next.
Until we have further information due to the proposed safety issues that have been brought before us tonight.
I'll second that.
Well.
Is that?
Does Mary, I don't have to second?
No, cause we're the new row.
And that meeting will be October the seventh.
I, I still don't know if that changes the, the fact of this, really, I don't think it has anything to do with the actual, the agenda, but it, it's a separate item, needs to be looked at. Sure. So, it needs to be done.
Well, is there, if, nothing's going, it's not going to impair his ability to do business between now and October seventh?
Well, no, it's not, now, what it could do is impair the ability for the lady that's actually obtained in the house to get her home. But other than that, I mean, you know, that's the only delay that I can see that could happen, is delay her on, on obtaining her single family dwelling.
But, let's find out, let's just say that we find something in the research that enables us to say, you must have two entrances. And if we found something, so the city could require there to be two entrances, a trailer would have to be moved, but it still doesn't change this.
I don't think any research in the news can allow us to change the configuration of that mobile home park that's currently exists.
So what, what can we hope to find out by the research?
If there was two entrances in nineteen ninety-five.
And if there were, that still does not require having two entrances now.
Does a change point.
So, so, I thought, I thought we said.
Time element probably does a lot.
The, the one thing that I will add to that is that, from what Larry said, is that, you know, even if it was allowed for him to close it, once it's established, it's established, and that's what you're trying to say, it's, it's there, it's there. Um, you just, you know, that'd be no different than walking in somebody's store and telling them, you can't run your store anymore. I mean, that's what you're doing, once it's established, it's there. Once you put the toothpaste out of the toothpaste tube, it's out of the toothpaste tube, okay? And that's kind of the way it is, um, we didn't have it, by the way, too, there was nothing in. And that's kind of the way it is. Um, we didn't have, and by the way, too, there was nothing in the old ordinance that I can recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, when we went through it, or, uh, that, that required two entrances to any establishment prior to us putting it in the LDC. I can't recall. I know there was nothing to do with mobile homes, and I don't think there was even anything to do with subdivisions unless they went over a certain number of homes. And it was way up there. Um, it's all, this is all new before then.
So this, so this motion that is moved, it doesn't.
Well, I mean, I'm going to tell you what you're going to find. That's what you're going to find.
I don't know what we need to do.
I still would like, I would still like to, to have the research, just to know. I still like that.
Well, when that motion's on the table, I can amend the motion to say, we don't table the, the decision on what we're going to do and get the research. Is that what we're saying?
Well, and she's going forward to the research without us having a motion, but.
Right.
We don't, we don't, we don't vote for that. She's going, she's going to do it.
All right, but I will draw my motion to my.
I withdraw my second, then, Rob.
So now we have.
How about all of this?
We table this to decide tonight. So.
That's true, we did.
Well, Johnny, this may could get our answer one from that, so.
But, well, then we will have to have a motion to either pass it or not pass it.
Look at them, go, go, go.
Wow, I don't know. Really, we need to come to a question on nine thirteen, not right, what I need to do. Because it sounds like the Miss Young lady wants to buy a home. Well, I don't know how young she is, but she wants to buy a home, yes, sir. Well, okay.
Well.
What, what are we going to do?
All right. If you're all ready to vote on this, I'd like to know if somebody can make a motion to approve the ordinance, second it passed. If you don't, if you don't want to deal with it tonight, make a motion to table it to a, take it certain. Or you can make a motion, you know, somebody can make a motion to deny the, uh, ordinance, can vote on it, okay?
Okay, y'all, y'all got you. I see you make the motion.
Somebody can make a motion to either table or approve it or deny.
I make a motion to deny.
Got a motion to deny in the second?
Second.
I've got a motion, second, and further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same side?
No.
I think that's, say it's.
She ain't buying the house, that's the question. It's all over the streets about the house buying, then. The house buying, then come about, do something, hey, just, do something. So let's, let's just go.
Fine, one vote, so let's move on. We've got a.
Let's go somewhere else.
I have number four.
We know.
Resolution divided for acceptance of the CDBG grant for Leroy Rogers' membership.
We know.
I need to vote for that.
I make a motion to accept the CDBG grant for Leroy Rogers.
Second.
I've got a motion, second, and further discussion. Just as a note, Larry, that was five hundred thousand CDBG grant, and that was matched with SLOSS funds, is that correct? Did we have to match it?
We're matching funds for it. No, there are some SLOSS funds that.
How, how much, did we have to match, fifty percent?
No, it's twenty percent. Seventy-nine thousand dollars, um, I remember.
Right.
What we had to do was, what we wanted to do was show that we had money for the project, to go into the project. And we had SLOSS money from SLOSS four.
Well, that's all I would need. Yeah, I think we didn't have any choice.
Well, let's just keep going.
Now, I'm going to say, look, I have a minute to start showing this.
Five hundred thousand, there's matching, there's matching then?
There's, there's matching funds. We have.
Seventy-nine thousand, or five hundred thousand?
Yeah, but we have a matching fund in SLOSS four.
Yeah, because that's what I asked.
We also have funds coming from SLOSS five.
True.
Okay, hold on. To get the CDBG again, the CDBG grant, we had to qualify saying we would match it by a certain amount. You're telling me it was only twenty percent, we didn't have to match it. We didn't have to match it five hundred thousand?
It's five hundred thousand is twenty percent match.
And that twenty percent match came from the SLOSS, like, did it come out of Indiana fund or anything?
No, it's not, it's not SLOSS.
So that's a, that's a, yes.
It's not general summing.
It's not general sum.
That's right. So it's a.
It's money that was designated for SLOSS four.
SLOSS four and SLOSS five had, uh, in the reference was SLOSS four and five, I think it was seven hundred fifty thousand SLOSS four, if I remember correctly. And there was another five hundred thousand SLOSS five for its handsome and senior senior. We applied for a grant and we got a five hundred thousand dollar grant to add to that pool of money to make renovations to the.
Okay, but all we had to have to get this CDBG grant was twenty percent of the five hundred thousand.
Jessica.
Is that correct? Is that correct? Hold on.
It's leverage is based on, I flip it, thirty percent based on the maximum grant that five hundred thousand. Um, but it's based on what you put in your application.
Okay, and we put twenty percent of that.
No, we put our.
Thirty.
We put what we have set aside. That gave us a stronger application.
And SLOSS three and four.
At four and five.
Four, five. You, you, you used that as the match.
We didn't use five. We just used four.
Okay, so that was already earmarked.
Yes, it's absolutely.
That was SLOSS earmarked, or instead of student.
That's right.
All right. I just called one a flag, because I said, well, you got a five hundred thousand dollar grant. Well, that's really, I mean, I was supporting the thing. There was, yeah, but you had to get five hundred thousand.
Well, they just don't understand.
I said, I said, no, they don't, now.
Imagine that. It's money that they voted on in SLOSS four, for the city's.
Exactly, and that's what they.
Okay, any other discussion on this? I, I call it, wait.
Thank you, Johnny. Any other discussion on this? Uh, Johnny, you familiar with this? This is the CDBG American, Leroy Rogers' son. Uh, okay, all, uh, everybody which is operating right here saying aye.
Aye.
That's Roma, that's you now. Uh, everyone has scratched the, I have number fifteen, we're all written that, understand that. There's nothing on the back, so we stand in turn. If anybody got something else to say.
We going to Louis' house, son, you too, pardon?